Okay, everyone, everything you say now is being recorded for posterity. I'd like to call this meeting the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board to order. I believe that the agenda stands as written. We'll discover that as we go along. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the planning consultants' meeting note.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Okay, and you've all had a chance to review the November 17th, 2014 minutes?
Yes.
Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Any amendment or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Let me see, any announcements? I don't think so.
You could, if they can see.
Oh, yes, we do have a vacancy on the planning board.
Coming up.
Coming up, a term ending December, this December. Bob Badbred will not be able to continue, unfortunately. I think it's a terrific loss to us, and we're going to miss him, but right now he's just not able to come back. So we do have a seven-year term that will be opening up. I know the town board is looking for people to volunteer. I'm sure there's people out.
It's been posted.
It's been posted, the people who'd love to do this. You can see how much fun it is. And what you need to do is just go to the town clerk's office and fill out an application, and what they do is they will interview. And then hopefully at the January, whatever that first Monday is, or second Monday is, second Monday, they're having their reorganization meeting, and at that point they would like to be able to appoint someone to fill that position. So if you or you know people who would like to do this or something, please encourage them to apply. It would, you know, sometimes getting a form can be a little sketchy, and we would really appreciate being up to full strength.
Michael, I think the other announcement, if you will, is that as a reminder that the planning board, as of January, moves back to its first Monday schedule for the first half of the year. Consequently, the planning board's next meeting is actually three weeks from tonight on Monday, January 5th, and the agenda for that meeting closes next Monday at, I believe it's 3:00.
Yeah. So, thank you, Aron. Any other thing, from anyone else? Anyone wish to discuss a three-foot discrepancy in the village of Rhinebeck? No? I guess not.
No.
All right, we'll leave that one alone. Our first public hearing will be at 6:35. We have one minute to go. So we'll just sort of sit here and, yeah, just look at the nice paintings on the wall. They really are very nice.
Mark, the plan in this case is dated July 7th of 2014. There hasn't been a revision date on that, has there?
We're getting close. Fifty seconds.
The only revision date. Is there a revision date? We'll be looking for it later.
We do 10/7/14, including the application made to the ZVA.
Right.
Just some additional mutation, that's it.
10/7?
10/7.
October 7th, then.
Do you want to share about the million for Grassmere?
I knew there was a minor revision, and didn't have the date of it.
Regional Council.
Why don't you, Melody, I think you know more about this than I do, and I think it's something that...
Just to share with the public, I don't know how many of you are aware of the fact that grants were announced for the Regional Council of New York, and the Grassmere project received a million dollars, which is a substantial amount of money to go toward the development of that project, which has, is back before us shortly.
Probably in January or February for the site plan process.
January, February for some site plan approval, but among the millions of dollars that were distributed and announced last week, there was a million dollars for the Grassmere project, which is...
Significant.
A significant amount of money to be going toward the development of that parcel.
Shows, I think, considerable faith in the desirability of that project, so it's pretty cool for Rhinebeck.
And the economic development potential for that property.
Okay, we're ready for our first public hearing. So hopefully for the last time, this public hearing. Oh, okay, we can do that. Okay. John McGuire Jr., Mark Gruminski, Agent, 42 Accretook Road, Special Use Permit and Subdivision Plaid Approval. Continuation from November 17th, 2014, of conduct of combined public hearing on applications for special use permit, conventional subdivision under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, and preliminary subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land for authorization of the creation of three residential building lots in an existing house lot from the entirety of a combined 6.216 acre parcel in the rural countryside and the neighborhood infill overlay districts being enlisted action under Seeker. This matter associated with area variance is granted by the ZVA November 19th, 2014. Mark, do you want to just say just any words you want to say, or has it all been said before? I mean, it has, but...
Would the board like, you know, is there anyone in the audience who has not seen the project?
Who's not familiar with this? I think everyone's familiar with it. Anything you'd like to add?
Just that you did know, we did go after review by the ZEO for this project, who required two area variances be applied for, which were granted by the Town of Rhinebeck ZVA for side and front yard setback, and we were just awaiting that until we came back to this board for preliminary approval of the subdivision.
Final.
Final.
And you'd very much like not to have to come back in January?
We'd love that.
All righty then. Any comments from the public? Any questions, comments from members of the planning board? Okay, I have a draft seeker resolution here that I'll read. "The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the applications by John McGuire, Mark Gruminski, P.E.L.S. agent for special use permit, conventional subdivision under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, and subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land in the matter of a lot line alteration, elimination, and the subsequent authorization of the creation of three residential building lots on an existing house, and an existing house lot from the entirety of a, then, of a now combined 6.216 acre parcel in the rural countryside RC5 and the neighborhood infill districts. The proposed action, having been classified by the planning board, is an enlisted action under Seeker for coordinated environmental inquiry review with other involved agencies. Neither is required nor has been undertaken. One, determines upon review of the EAF Part 1 and its own completion of the annexed EAF Part 2 in consideration of both field observations and the criteria for determining significance set forth in Title VI, Part 617.7(c) NYCRR. The proposed action, as described in the application and being an enlisted action, will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment, and thus issues a negative declaration determination of non-significance, deeming an environmental impact statement to not be required and stating such will not be prepared. Two, authorizes the chairman to so execute the short EAF and directs the planning board clerk to file the short EAF with negative declaration annotation in the manner set forth within the Seeker Implementing Regulation, Title 6.617.12 NYCRR." Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion of any sort? I guess I'll poll the board. Jesse?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
It's the seeker determination for John McGuire.
Oh, no, I've already read that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And we have maybe just enough time. Do I have enough time to read all this? I think I do.
The draft resolution is for issuance of the special use permit for the conventional subdivision in the RC5 and neighborhood infill overlay district, and for conditional final plat approval of the subdivision. So it outlines all of the conditions that need to be met within the next 180 calendar days.
For the chair to stamp and sign.
Right, before stamping and signing. The only modification in the application, in the resolution, draft resolution, is the insertion in the opening paragraph of the date, October 7th, 2014.
And revised to, is that it?
Yes.
October 7th, okay. Here we go. "The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on a proposed action involving applications by John McGuire, Mark Gruminski, P.E.L.S. agent for special use permit, conventional subdivision under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, and subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land in the matter of lot line alteration, elimination, and the subsequent authorization of the creation of three residential building lots in an existing house lot from the entirety of a combined 6.216 acre parcel in the rural countryside RC5 and neighborhood infill districts. All is set forth on a subdivision plat prepared by Mr. Gruminski dated July 7th, 2014 and revised to October 7th, 2014. The proposed action being the subject of a negative declaration determination of non-significance heretofore issued by the planning board and in part the subject of area variances granted by the ZVA on November 19th, 2014 concerning setbacks of the existing single-family dwelling located within the subdivision parcel. In consideration of the application for special use permit, conventional subdivision..." There you go. "...determines the John McGuire four-lot subdivision to conform to all pertinent standards for large lot development in the RC5 and neighborhood infill districts and to cause no significant adverse effects on the environment that would be avoided where cluster or some other non-conventional land subdivision technique applied, and thus grants the requested special use permit to authorize the proposed conventional subdivision of the subject parcel in the manner depicted. In consideration of the application for subdivision plat approval..." Approves the application for subdivision plat approval and authorizes the chairman to stamp and sign the subdivision plat for the John McGuire four-lot subdivision upon the applicant's satisfaction each of the below conditions and/or requirements within 180 calendar days of the planning board's adoption of this resolution. A, design approved by the Dutchess County Health Department for proposed on-site water supply and sanitary sewage facilities on each of the proposed residential building lots. B, in addition to the above, stamping of the subdivision plat as an approved realty subdivision or either as a non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department. C, an approval in writing by the Town Highway Superintendent of proposed driveway locations at each of the proposed residential building lots by the Town Highway Superintendent.
Delete the "by the," it's repeated, "by the Town Highway Superintendent," it's stated there twice.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, you're right. Okay, scratch that. They only get one reference. D, submission of subdivision plat drawings in the number and form specified within Town Code Chapter 101, including thereon all required stamps, seals, and certifications. E, payment of other outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Rhinebeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land and associated town fee schedule and related escrow agreement. F, in consideration of the planning board's determination that it would not be appropriate to require set aside of parkland within the McGuire four-lot subdivision, payment of a three-lot cash in lieu of land recreation fee to the Town of Rhinebeck for deposit in the town's Recreation Trust Fund, this fee being in the aggregate amount of $9,000 on the basis of a per-lot standard of $3,000 set forth in the town's planning and zoning fee schedule." Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion, changes, alterations? I'll poll the board. Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. It's done. It only took five years.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you, John, and thank you for your patience, and it's much appreciated.
Merry Christmas, sir.
Okay, take care. Okay, I see we're...
Astor Courts.
We're ready for our next public hearing. Astor Courts LLC, River Road, County Route 103, Special Use Permits and Site Plan. Conduct of combined public hearing on applications for special use permit, country-in-one, including work within 1,000 feet of the Hudson River, and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of the adaptive reuse of the historic structure and grounds known as Astor Courts, situated on the west side of, at 189 River Road, and within, among other designations, the Historic Preservation HB20 Zoning District, the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, Estates District Scenic Area of Statewide Significance, and Town of Rhinebeck Local Waterfront Revitalization Area, being a Type 1 action under Seeker. And I will turn this over to the presenters.
I'll start.
Before moving in that direction, Michael, do we have documentation that there's been compliance with all the notice and house requirements?
Where's John?
Oh, I'm sorry, she's in the office, I guess.
Oh, hang on.
Just, in light of some of the recent... There've been some noticing discrepancies with the official newspaper in recent times, and I want to make sure that all the requirements have been met prior to the public hearing. Good.
What, you still spry at my age? Okay.
Now...
Yep.
Good to go.
Good evening, my name is Mark Gruminski, I'm a consulting engineer and land surveyor, and I'm here representing Astor Courts regarding a site plan special permit application for adaptive reuse and conversion of a existing structure located on the west side of River Road, Dutchess County Highway Number 103, to a country-in-one as defined in the Town of Rhinebeck zoning code. Astor Courts is located on a parcel, as I said, on the west side of River Road. Parcel size is a little more than 50 acres, 50.37 acres. Access is by entrance located on River Road with a gravel driveway which enters to the west into the property, and then there's some access roads around the existing structure. This application is very sensitive to the property and its location, and so I'm here to introduce it and also speak relative to site improvements, which are very minor in this case, speak with regard to water, sewer, and onsite surface drainage. And then I will turn the, turn the, this session of the introduction over to Sam White, architect retained by Astor Courts, to describe some of the architectural revisions, changes, modifications that are being made to this structure as part of this application. The, as I mentioned, there's an existing driveway which will be used for this application. No changes are anticipated to the driveway. Just a little bit of history, this particular parcel was under, was, had a previous application in front of this board for conversion into a, it was a conference center. So when that application took place, there were some modifications that were requested by the town on the driveway. Those were made, there were some turnout areas that were, that were constructed as part of the, you know, for safety and access of emergency vehicles along the existing access. Since I'm going along that way, there's also been, you know, from previous discussion with adjoining owners, there was a request by owner to the south, COF, that some landscaping be done as part of a mitigation to the entrance to mitigate any light from vehicles entering or exiting the site. There was some, that location is shown on the plan, with an evergreen screen that's proposed in that area. Moving into the site, there's very little that will change, and that has been the goal all along with this application regarding the site. Utilization of existing parking areas to provide parking for, for the country-in-one. There's a parking court located on the north side of the building, front of the building, that'll be utilized for, there's parking spaces there and allows handicap accessibility to the structure. In addition, there are some parking areas that'll be used, there's grass parking areas that are going to be used on the south side of the building, near the building, and then a little bit further to the south, off of existing access roads and driveways on the property. Therefore, no need to, you know, create any impervious areas, regrading or paving. Utilization of all existing space, you know, spaces on the property for parking. Hence, with that, there is no anticipated change in any stormwater runoff patterns. It's just utilizing what's there now. And then finally, with regard to water and sewer demands and for the site, it's water supplied by the Village of Rhinebeck Water Treatment Plant, and there's a water main that passes through the adjoining owner to the north, and a water main comes in and services this building. With regard to wastewater disposal, what's being proposed in ongoing discussions with Dutch County Health Department right now is utilization of the existing onsite subsurface sewage disposal system. There's some history with that, I won't go into the detail, but that has been discussed and explored with the Health Department. And in addition to that, because of the proposed use for this, for this structure, since there'll be some food preparation that's included with the use, it'll be a hybrid use utilizing the existing onsite subsurface sewage disposal, and also having a tank for pump-out for, for any of the food prep wastes that are, that are being generated from the, from the project. That summarizes the, you know, the work being done on the site. As I mentioned, it's just utilizing the existing features and trying to take advantage of that. So at this time, I'll, I'll turn over the presentation to Sam White, who's the architect for the project.
Well, good evening, I'm Sam White from Platt Bar Deville White Architects, the architects for Astor Courts. And I don't think I can go through this as quickly as you can go through the, read the finding that you just read, but if you can bear with me. I'd like to talk about Astor Courts and talk about this application, which is essentially two things. It's an application for a change of use, and inherent in that is an application that is connected to an addition. And I hope that in the course of my talking about it, you'll understand that the change of use is possibly a letter-of-the-law change of use and not a spirit-of-the-building change of use. But I'd like to talk about the addition for a minute, which was about, 15 years ago, I saw Astor Courts for the first time. We went up, it was arranged, went Aldrich, got us into Astor Courts when the Maguires were there, and the Maguires were not really big on having people come and visit Astor Courts. It was sort of a, pretty much of a isolated compound in those days, but we were able to convince them to let me go see it, and so I went up, and I think, and Mary McGuire's mother was quite ill, and she was living in the house at that time, and so the Maguires had really kind of clamped down on the freedom that they accorded their visitors and looking around the house, and so I was looking around the house under fairly heavily escorted conditions, and getting, sort of, being really encouraged to speed up and get out there and get out of there, and I left, and I was with my wife, who was co-author with me of a book on, one of three books we did on McKimmid and White, and we left, and we're driving down the driveway, and I'm sort of playing back in my mind what I had seen in this incredible house, and I realized that one of the things that I had seen was this staircase. Which is a picture, those of you who haven't seen it. So I'm walking around the house, and I saw this staircase, and I remembered that I had seen the staircase, and we're driving down the driveway, and I say, "Oh, my God, I never saw the second floor." And that is, that will come into play, because this is an application about the second floor that this staircase will lead you to. The history of the house, and the history is sort of a history of different owners and, and sort of interesting variations on the same use. It was built in 1902 by John Jacob Astor IV, who was trying to solve the, kind of the Achilles' heel problem of country houses in the Gilded Age, which was how you keep the unmarried men separate from the unmarried women. And this is a problem that is solved most elegantly at the Mills Mansion, and really nowhere better has this been done than there. And the way that, where they did it with a vertical separation with Mrs. Mills in the middle, and, and said to be a very light sleeper. And the way John Jacob Astor did this was he just basically split the two, he moved the guys into a building out of sight from the main house. He also, at the same time, used it not only as what's called a garçonnière, which is this building for young men, but he also solved the problem of precarious weather conditions in the Hudson River Valley at the, sort of, the shoulder of the season. And so this 20,000-square-foot structure contained a swimming pool, it contained a tennis court, it had two squash courts, and, as well as the bedrooms here for the men, a changing room for the men, a changing room for the women, and then some garage facilities down below, because John Jacob Astor was really interested in road paving, and he had a lot of equipment that he liked to keep at hand. So that was the way the house was set up originally. Astor goes down on the Titanic in 1912, his son Vincent inherits, and Vincent used it for, through a series of marriages, I think, as a kind of a party house, you see pictures of people in dinner jackets getting thrown into the swimming pool. But it was a party house. It was intended to be for entertaining for large groups of people. When, and I would say Vincent made very few changes to the building until he married Brooke Astor, and at that point Brooke Astor removed the two squash courts right there and had, that converted into a, sort of a library study. And then the other change she made was that she thought that individual bedrooms needed to have individual bathrooms, and so she built a sort of a series of bathrooms here into this west hall, sort of pods coming out into it, which really kind of ruined that end of the house in a way. Those of you who ever saw it in that condition, when it was, had all these sort of bathrooms chugged in, but she didn't like the idea that there were just sort of essentially common bathroom, one bathroom for the women and one bathroom for the men, was not her idea of how to run a good house with house guests. She, when Vincent Astor died, Brooke Astor called Cardinal Spellman and basically gave the works to him, and the house was taken over by the Carmelite Sisters, used as a nursing home, and originally, the house itself was both the convent and the nursing home, and I think in its highest use had 50 people living in it, both nuns and residents of the nursing home. The nuns typically lived downstairs in the maid's bedrooms, the servants' bedrooms on the ground floor, with the residents of the nursing home living on the first floor. The, and that continued until the convent, they built a separate convent, the nuns moved out so that the house could accommodate more residents of the nursing home, then they built Ferncliff, which now holds an enormous number of beds for, as a nursing home, and at that point, the house was taken over by the Maguires, who did not use it for these kind of large assembly purposes, they kept pretty much to themselves, until about 10 years ago, the house was bought by Kathy Hammer and Arthur Sealbinder, and they really restored the house, not only architecturally and getting rid of, for example, they got rid of all those bedrooms, bathrooms rather, that Brooke had built into that hall, they restored the finishes, replaced a lot of the interior finishes, which had been sort of messed up over the years, but they also really restored the use of the house as a, as a building that really sort of contributed to the life in the Hudson River Valley. I mean, I think I was saying to Kathy earlier that many people in this room have been in that house, I mean, I think you would have had to be in prison in the last 10 years to have not had the opportunity to go and visit this house. It's a very, they make it very, very easy for preservation groups and public groups to hold events in the house. They're extremely hospitable, and we had, in fact, one of the challenges that we had as architects was to figure out how two people, sort of effectively a couple with grown children at this point, could live in a 20,000-square-foot house, which we did by sort of assigning zoning, that this is sort of the Kathy and Arthur end right there, and then these are the guests down there, and then these rooms, the front hall and the tennis court, those are really rooms that have a public use. I mean, people have, they have friends who come and play tennis, and there is just a, when you walk in there, you feel as though you've walked into some kind of a public building. That is the, that's the history of the use of it. The plan then is to convert this to a country-in type 1, and that allows us to build 12 bedrooms. And the way we've solved that is... Just taking you from the bottom up. These are the famous servants' rooms, these were the rooms that were, where the nuns had lived. They are, they're at the ground level, there are high, a series of high windows here overlooking the Hudson River. We would be converting this section into... We would be converting this section into two bedrooms with en suite baths. We'd be lowering those window openings to create small proprietary terraces at a couple of points there so you could go through some French doors out into a small terrace and overlook the Hudson. But essentially, two rooms and the downstairs. The big conversion is on the first floor. We would be building six rooms, bringing us up to eight. So one, two, three, four, five, and six. And then we would be adding two rooms, I'm sorry, four rooms to the second floor, one, two, three, and four. Now, that brings us back to the famous staircase. This is, the staircase is right here. And what White had designed, when he originally designed this building for John Jacob Astor, was he had designed a roof terrace. The original drawings showed a development with, and it was a, it was not a highly developed scheme, but in all the working drawings, they showed that this stair led you up to some area with decking and with some arrangement of pergolas that were set between the chimneys there. So there was an intention to create some form of activity as an extension of the house with this great staircase leading up to the second floor. I'm not sure that was ever built. I really have never seen any sign that they actually built the, the sort of the pergola decked area on the second floor. They certainly built the stair and the stair leads now to just a little doghouse that gets you out onto the roof. But a stair like that, just, that stair was, was not an afterthought. That stair was an essential part of the original design. We would be using that stair to get to the second floor. We would be introducing an elevator right there to get to the second floor as well as to the lower floors. And then, as I say, creating four bedrooms up on the roof. The architectural strategy for this is... I'm going to show you two floors. Essentially, in terms of the exterior walls of that four-room, four-bedroom addition, those would be glass. I have a sample of this glass that I would show you. It's not a, it's a glass with a low E coating. I brought it with me. It's not a reflective glass. I think I have it over here. Standard plate glass with a low E coating. It's slightly reflective, but then glass itself is slightly reflective. It becomes a mirror in the room at night and on the, during the day, it looks dark on the outside. But, so in addition to this glass, which we think is essentially going to be reflecting the sky because of the angle at which you see it, the trick was to deal with the fact that this is asymmetrical and this house is completely symmetrical. And this is a, the house is based on the Grand Trianon in Versailles and is intended to be completely symmetrical. And we're building this addition that is asymmetrical. The scheme, here's the existing house here. This is the, the gable over the tennis court. It's, this is about 55 feet back from the, from the, the front balustrade, so you don't in fact see that gable, except from a very, very long distance away and when you're up at that elevation. But otherwise, this is way in the background. These are the, from the original McKibben White working drawings, these show the development of the pergola and lattice work up on the second floor that the stair was leading to. And so taking a sort of a cue from, from that pergola and lattice work, what we are proposing to do after we build this box essentially, which is set about 12 feet back from the, on the front from the balustrade, we are going to create a perg, sort of a, I guess you would call it a pergola that runs all the way across the face of the house. And this would be made out of aluminum. It would be, have a baked on painted finish in a kind of a very, very light gray. And it would go across the front of the house and it would go across the Hudson River side of the house. This is the elevation that faces the river. This is where we're lowering those windows in the bottom floor. And this is the kind of thing that Renzo Piano does. If you look at his portfolio, he frequently has to take an older building and add an addition to it and then somehow pull the whole thing together. He did this at the California Institute of Sciences in Golden Gate Park in San Francisco. And what he does after he builds his addition and he builds, restores the older building is that he creates a sort of very lacy pergola element that sort of ties the two together like a belt and becomes a sort of a foreground element. So that what you're seeing is this continuous pergola primarily and the, if you can keep the detailing on the glass addition to a very minimal dimension, then really what you see is this sort of the, the, the pattern of light that is created with this pergola element going all the way across. And we think that, that that, that strategy is going to compensate for the fact that behind the pergola, we are in fact building something that is not symmetrical to the building. And the sort of general transparency and eeriness and lightness of this pergola, we think is in the spirit of an addition on the roof of this otherwise masonry building. That's, that's our scheme. And what I hope you understand is that, that in converting this to a country inn, that we are really extending the life of this building as a building that is, was built for hospitality. I mean, it really has sort of this entertaining as part of the DNA of its architecture. And I think that, I personally think that this is a highly compatible use, but obviously everyone is entitled to his own opinion. Happy to answer any questions, but I think I've probably imposed on your patience to about the limit.
I wouldn't say that. Any questions currently by members of the planning board? Hearing none. Is there someone, any other part of the presentation you'd like to do before we open up the public hearing?
Not me, but there may be, turn to my owners and ask them if there's anything else.
Okay. Well, I think that probably the next step then would be the report from the two planning board members who did the site visit, was Richard and I. And Richard, if you'd like to...
It was my first visit, so I was one of those 10 people that after 10 years were in jail. First opportunity to visit this absolutely amazing building. The owners have painstakingly restored so many different elements that were just evaporated over the years and covered up. I think it's fantastic that they're going to take this and open it up in this way to give more people the opportunity to see it because, you know, unlike the jailed people like myself, I, you know, I didn't make one of those events. I probably could have and I probably should have, but I think it's wonderful and I think the, you know, at first I said, oh, you're going to put this, this big addition on top of the building? It's, it's really not. It's lower than the existing glass roof over the tennis courts. It's, it's, it's not really as big. And if you saw the staircase inside the house, it absolutely was the intention. It was just never followed through, I think, when they built the house. And it was, it was definitely built for entertainment. The house, I think it's a great use. I wish them luck.
I don't, not much I can add to what Richard said. I, I agree. I've been up on the roof a few times. It's a beautiful view from up there. When you do look at the building and the size and the way they're proposing to do this additional structure up there, I don't believe it's going to take away from the aesthetics of the site in any way, shape, or form. And clearly, the building and the structure can handle the 12 rooms they're proposing to put into it. They, I know when it was a conference center proposal, we had significant issues with parking because the number of people would be likely to come for parking. With the new proposal, the parking that is required already exists on site. There'll be no additional impervious surfaces, things like that. Frankly, I don't know what else you would do with a building like this to preserve it. It's clearly not a home that most of us would, well, most of us obviously wouldn't. We weren't the Astors. But I think clearly, this is a use that opens it up to the community more than the owners have currently done. It's been made available to people for not, all sorts of nonprofit events, things of that sort. It's the sort of way that in, in this day and age, if we're going to preserve these buildings, have them available to the public, things like that, I don't see any other way that you can actually do it. So I, I concur with what Richard said. I think it's a good project. I think there's more things we need to look at and, you know, more details to work out. But I, you know, on the whole, you know, I think it is a, a good project.
Can I also add the use of the glass on the, the additions for the suites on the roof? I think it's just beautiful because it's going to complement the glass that's already there. It's an interesting element on the building when you stand back and look at it to see that glass. Lee?
Just from the perspective of historic preservation, I would also like to comment that this is, to my understanding, entirely reversible. So should the, I mean, not that we want it to go in that direction, but one of the, one of the goals of ongoing historic preservation is that anything new that's added can be taken off and reversed. So not that we're looking at that, but it could be and it would go back to exactly what it is today. Am I correct about that, Sam?
That's correct. We keep the stair, though.
I understand. But, but, but it is entirely reversible.
Entirely reversible.
And that is important to note, that, that this could be taken off and you would be back with the existing building should that ever need to happen.
Is there someone here from the conservation advisory board that have a report, preliminary report, anything like that tonight? Hearing none. I will assume there's no report from the waterfront advisory committee either. Okay. Joni, have we heard from Duchess County yet? Not yet, so we're still waiting for the referral to the county. Okay, well, at this point, anything else running from the planning board right now? Yes, ma'am? We did hear, so local concern? Okay, so the county signed off on this from a review standpoint, county planning. Okay, what I'd like to do now is I'd like to open this up to the public for comment. I will also let you know, we will be continuing the public hearing, so this will not be the only chance you're going to have to speak. But, you know, please feel free to come up and speak to this project, what this project is and what this project entails. Remember, we're the planning board. We basically approve, review, approve, or disapprove projects brought before us as far as other issues such as the status of the Duchess, of the Rhinebeck zoning law and things of that sort. That's something that you'd have to take to the town board. But any comments you have on this project, you know, please feel free to come up and speak. And what we'll ask you to do is come up to the microphone, identify who you are, and then speak up.
Michael, I'd like to add to, to what you stated. We'd encourage any and all comments, questions, et cetera, that you might have to be made this evening. While the public hearing will be continued to a later date, it's important that any concerns, questions, et cetera, be placed on the table this evening because the intention in moving forward from, from this evening is to have a technical work session involving the code enforcement officer, the town planning board engineer, the town planning board chairman, and myself to address with the applicant any comments, questions, modifications that might be, might be built into the project before the public hearing is continued. So we're looking at essentially moving from this mid-December time to having one or more technical work sessions during the month of January so that this might be continued at the February meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Van Tyle and I'm here speaking on behalf of Robert Duffy, who is the most immediate neighbor to this project having property abutting on the north. Certainly, the architectural presentation is very, very interesting. I think I'm here on behalf of Mr. Duffy and speaking on behalf of neighbors to point out that this application before you isn't just about the architecture. And I think that being fascinated and charmed by the architecture, which it's easy to do, encourages us to not pay attention to some other equally important preliminary matters under zoning and under the special permit standards. So a couple preliminary matters. What is this use under zoning? I think the first thing to remember is that it's a vastly larger use than this board considered and approved in 2009. I think there's some thinking that this is just sort of a natural segue and something that's even better than what the board approved in 2009. But back then, which wasn't so very long ago, this board grilled the applicant and mandated a decision that the, on what the limits would be considering that this was in a single-family neighborhood. So in 2009, we had an assurance that there would be no modification of the building, whereas now we have a significant alteration of the building. More importantly, in 2009, we had daytime use only. So we had events that were, where the board members questioned how many people there would be, that there would be events once or twice a month, 25 to 50 people. And importantly too, this was to be a use that was in tandem with the continuing single-family use of the property. I disagree that it's impossible that this could be a single-family house. This has in fact been considered a single-family house by the town zoning board and planning board for many years. Now, under this proposal, the single-family use is eliminated. In 2009, there was questioning of the applicant to assure that there would be no food preparation on site, no restaurant, no dining. So in fact, everything that was prohibited in 2009 is now part of this proposal. So what is the use under zoning? We're told that this is a country in one. I note that there has been no determination of the zoning enforcement officer, which is supposed to be a part of any special permit application. I don't believe that this is a country in one and I believe that in fact, it is a conference center, small-scale conference center under zoning. I'm not the person who ultimately makes the decision and neither is the planning board, but I raise it with you because I think that the matter should be referred to the zoning enforcement officer. Now, why does it matter? It matters because it has to do with the density and it has to do with whether or not the building needs to be added to. Certainly, the applicant has stated in the submitted materials that it wants to continue the conference center function. It wants to consider, continue having meetings in large spaces, which is what was proposed in 2009. And, and that is allowable under the code as a conference center that holds conferences and offers guest accommodations. But that section of the code sets the maximum number of guest rooms at six. Now, why isn't this a country in under zoning? Because it doesn't have quarters for the owner or caretaker to continue to live there. It's not a use in tandem with single-family use. So again, I think the issue should be referred to the zoning enforcement officer to make an interpretation. And I think it is interesting to see that what this board is being asked to do in a single-family district is approve something that's the maximum density. So the choice of use here is one that provides double the density of what a conference center does. And there's an automatic assumption that we should go to the maximum density. I think that's not justified under the zoning law. And also important to note that if this is a conference center and if the density is less, there's no need to add to the building. So perhaps the use is viable, but without the need to expand it and expand the intensity of it. So I think the next thing that's needed for all of us to understand and the neighbors, I mean, perhaps we will understand when we see an actual description of what is being proposed. I read the materials from 2009. I read the materials on file and truthfully, they're very vague. They talk about things like restoring the old use, adaptive reuse, and these words sound very nice. But when you're a neighbor living next to a property being used under zoning, it's important to know just what the kind of uses are going to be. There's a lot of things that have happened at the Astor Courts building, more since 2009 than, than before. And I'm glad to hear that everyone in town appreciates the opportunity to go there and that's well and good. But there's a reasonable concern by the neighbors about the scale of events, the number of events, the large events that happen late at night, what is being proposed. A special permit application is supposed to have a description, a project description, something beyond architecture. The architecture is charming. I don't think anybody disputes that. But there's a whole bunch of special permit criteria that this board has to pay attention to. So what are the... So what are the hours? What are the seasons? What will happen, you understand, is that if a use like this is approved, then we're all likely to hear arguments, when it is approved, that such and such is a customary accessory use of our country inn. And I think that you don't have to think very long to consider just what all of this could include. And in a moment, I'll address the issue of access, which is, of course, the major issue that concerns Mr. Duffy. And I hope you'll understand that my concerns on behalf of Mr. Duffy are not petty or unreasonable. But we are entitled as neighbors to have a written description of the proposed action. That's something that's required under zoning, and it's somewhat shocking to me that this application has gotten this far without any application like that. Again, I ask you not to be so charmed by the architecture and by the beauty of the building. It is a beautiful building. I was there for the first time myself a couple weeks ago, and it, it's very impressive. But what is the potential mass, maximum traffic? What in, what kind of events could be conducted jointly with other venues? Where are these cars going to go? What is going to be involved? What is the maximum size? What can be anticipated? The neighbors need to know that. Another legitimate concern of the neighbors is, who are our neighbors going to be? I think everybody knows that the people who live in Astor Courts now have been generous with the community and have gotten to know a lot of people, are well-known community members. But land approvals run with the land, and so the neighbors, we want to know who our neighbors are going to be. And once this use or any other special permit is approved, the land could be sold tomorrow and could be operated by a corporation that has no ties to the local community, no ties to Rhinebeck, no ties to the people who live on River Road. So we need this board to look at the matter rationally and clearly, to understand what could happen in the future. That's why we need a clear description of use. Something else that your code requires, a project narrative going through each of the special permit criteria and explaining how the project meets it. Now, why is something like this important in an application? Because it sort of flushes out the, the description of the project. When you go through the standards for a special permit and explain how it is that you meet each one of them, you tend to be providing assurances and commitments that can be incorporated in the approval so that they can be later enforced. Our concern with a record this loose, this vague, this nonexistent at this point is, if an approval is given merely because everyone likes the architecture, how could any limits ever be enforced? We're concerned because we're the people living here. So that narrative needs to be provided, and again, since nothing has been provided so far, I don't think it's really fair to put the neighbors in a position of, of raise it or lose it here tonight. But I'm, I'm just going to raise one of the standards, because it's the one that's most important to Mr. Duffy. All proposed traffic accessways shall be adequate but not excessive in number, adequate in width, grade, alignment, and visibility, be sufficiently separated from street intersections and places of public assembly, and meet similar safety considerations. Now, I would agree with everything that you said about there should be a party house, et cetera, if Astor Courts were on a nice, big rectangular lot with a lot of frontage But it's not. You can see that the, this large piece was Mr. Maguire's property, and he had two houses on the lot, Astor Courts, which was his home, then called the casino, and the teahouse over on this parcel. Back in 2000, he commenced plans to subdivide the property, and he continued in that subdivision to use the same driveway that had served the two houses before. So what you can see, if you can't see anything else, is that this driveway winds back and forth over each of the properties. It's, it's subject to a shared driveway agreement, but it's certainly not all in the control of Astor Courts, nor is it all in the control of Mr. Duffy. It's a shared driveway. Now, why is the driveway the standard that it is? I think we have to look at the past to understand where we are today and where we should be in the future. And I think we need to know that when, when, where's Sam? When Astor Courts was a party house, it was part of a big estate. It was a very different situation. Mr. Maguire's lot was created out of one of the arch diocesan subdivisions, and when this lot was created, this stone wall was solid. So that driveway hasn't been here for all that long. It was first permitted in 1981, and it wasn't actually built at all until 1997. Mr. Maguire broke through the wall and built this single driveway. Now, Rhinebeck is a town that's been concentrating on preservation of historic structures and planning for longer than any town that I know in Duchess County, and I've grown up Back in 2000, when this lot was proposed to be subdivided, it couldn't legally be subdivided. And Jack May, as your building inspector, code enforcement officer, said, "It can't be subdivided because you have two flag lots." Now, Art remembers that under the former zoning, you couldn't have two flag lots. And so this application had to actually go before the Zoning Board of Appeals to see whether the second lot could be formed. And it's interesting to read the record, and I think it'll be informative to you when you try to apply the standards of encouraging historic preservation. I think that's one thing. But I think that you have to understand other provisions that are also in your comprehensive plan and your LWRP about being sensitive to the context of development. This party house is not located on a big lot for a party house. It may be located on 50 acres, but that 50 acres has a very tenuous, narrow connection. Now, when this application for the two flag lots and shared driveway went before the Zoning Board of Appeals, you happened to be at the meeting, Michael, as you were on the CAC. Sally was at the meeting, Drayton Grant was at the meeting. And what was discussed is that the creation of this single driveway and two flag lots with a shared driveway was an ideal way to deter future development. There had previously been a proposal for a golf course and some development in there. People had banned, the neighbors had banded, banded together to stop that from happening. I'm quoting Drayton Grant at this meeting, "Two houses on 80 acres is the best-case scenario." And I commend to you the, the minutes of those meetings. Everyone in town knew at the time the size of the casino. It was considered to be a house. It is a large house, but it was considered to be a house. So the variance was granted, making clear that the reason that it was granted was not to facilitate the, the future founding of a party house. It was granted really with the purpose of confirming the single-family nature of the development and deterring future development of the property. Similarly, when the application went back to the Planning Board, it was the Planning Board that required the shared driveway agreement, and it was the Planning Board that clearly reviewed an EAF that said this is a subdivision for two existing single-family homes. The water and sewer were said to be as existing, two existing single-family homes, and the neg deck finding and the approval were all built on this assumption. And I think that when you see this, you see that there are limits placed by the context of this narrow flag lot and this very limited driveway on what can be done and what should be done on the property, and that's very important for you to consider. Now, there may be some other way for Astor Courts to, to, to obtain access. I don't know, but the present method on the present driveway is not a way that is suitable for this level of development. There was discussion in the past, and I would just repeat again, that allowing an intense use of this driveway ends up transferring liability to Mr. Duffy. That can be insured against to some degree, but certainly not wholly. I want to mention briefly the DPW permit. There was mention at the last meeting by Mark that the DPW permit has now been issued, so that's no longer part of the application. Well, I think there's two things that need to be mentioned about that. First of all, only this Planning Board has jurisdiction under the special permit criteria to decide whether access is sufficient, so that whatever DPW did or didn't do has nothing to do with that. DPW's jurisdiction is limited to granting a curb cut or not granting a curb cut. But more importantly, the DPW has consistently understood that this driveway poses severe limitations, and in the permit that it granted in 2012, the county DPW specifically said, "This highway work permit," which then was to lower the two walls on either side of the driveway, "authorizes work within the county right-of-way only. Work performed on private property, if any, shall be subject to all existing covenants, easements, restrictions, and agreements that may apply." This condition by DPW has never been revoked or superseded and still applies. Now, you may have seen the, the work that was done in the summer on the driveway entrance, a substantial additional widening, tearing down of the walls, rebuilding the walls, et cetera. And that is said to be by virtue of the DPW permit that no longer needs to be involved in this proceeding because it was issued. Well, I commend to you the records before the DPW. This application was made to DPW in the spring of this year, precisely at the time that Astor Courts was coming before you for the sketch plan as a predicate to this application, but was presented to DPW as a completely separate application, segmented, if you will, totally segmented, claimed to be merely a type-two replacement in kind, and that's how it was processed under Seeker. I think that was a clear violation of Seeker, and I think that because it was, that permit is subject to review by the DPW, because as far as I can ascertain from reading their files, they had no idea whatsoever that this application for a country inn was being proposed. And there's nothing in their approval that indicates that they did know that it was being proposed. Again, I think the, the primary point is that they could never take your jurisdiction away anyway, and they never reviewed the driveway itself, they're reviewing the curb cut. Additionally, that work that took down some stone walls on a scenic road, I think if this rings a bell with me, because I know that my client, when he wanted to restore this, this very same stone wall a little bit up the road, came before you for a special permit to authorize the restoration of that wall. So this work was done also in a segmented fashion, not part of the overall review, and that's just not right. So I think we need to have a fair and honest consideration of what's the whole action here. Operationally, what is really going to be going on here? Let's not get, be, take, carried away with the romance of, of a beautiful home. Let's talk about what the use really is going to be, that the neighbors are going to live with and that the town has lived with. At the October meeting, there was discussion of future plans for this project, of building the dock, restoring the powerhouse. Seeker requires that the whole action be considered together, even future phases of it. There was also substantial clearing of the hillside this summer. That should be part of this, too, as should the work on the walls. There's been a lot of things that have just been done, and again, that's not according to the procedure that most applicants follow. Finally, I think that before the official start of a public review period, there needs to be a new lead agency circulation by this board. The board's previous lead agency status expired on the day that you issued your negative declaration in 2009, that's September 21, 2009. Furthermore, those permits expired on September 21, 2010, so there is no lead agency in this action until you circulate for that, and I think that it's important to do so. And lastly, I would ask that this application be referred to the town engineer. I was quite surprised to see that it was not yet referred to him. And I ask that not so much because of the sewer and, the septic and water issues, although there could conceivably be issues concerning that once we get a full project description, but certainly because of the issues relating to the driveway and to the traffic access. I think the town is going to need independent engineering advice as to the, the quality of the road and the access. So again, I hope that the Planning Board understands that this is not general neighbor kvetching or, or, or general concerns about not wanting anyone else to develop property in your neighborhood, but it's, it's really a heartfelt concern based upon the potential for real, real abuse of the context of a single-family neighborhood. And this town knew the size of Astor Courts in 2000, when it issued the area variance to allow this flag lot. The Planning Board understood it when it granted the subdivision approval. And I think that the, the phrases that are in your, are in your comprehensive plan about encouraging the, the restoration of and preservation of historic buildings all emphasize also that sensitivity to context has to be honored. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I guess the one thing I would say, definitely, okay, and please feel free to help yourself in the spirit of the season. We definitely, our town engineer, definitely, our Planning Board engineer will definitely be part of the review process for this. There's no question about that.
Michael, yeah, I guess I just want to add to that. In reviewing the, the submission, I think there's one thing that's very clear in the submission, is that the special use permit that has been requested is for country inn one. If there's a complimentary submission or a complimentary proposal, it needs to be advanced by the applicant, because right now the proposal is country inn one, and country inn one does have the, the sorts of limitations that Ms. Van Tyle outlined. The other thing is that it was, I anticipate, based upon the applicant's presentation, the amount of presentation that would be made, as well as anticipated public comment, as I said earlier, that there would definitely be a need for one or more technical work sessions going forward from this evening regarding this project, clearly involving the town code enforcement officer and the Planning Board engineer, myself, the chair, and maybe some other parties. With respect to the code enforcement officer who, Ron, who just came on board several months ago, Ron is on record as having taken a very preliminary look at this project and basically taking the position, "I need to get further acquainted with the project," not having the benefit of the history that some of the others of us do over the last, last four or five years. And what was anticipated is that there will be one or more technical work sessions to consider planning and... consider planning, engineering, zoning, and/or environmental issues associated with the project, many of which you've advanced this evening, and to determine what additional information needs to be provided to the planning board to proceed under the town code and under Seeker. And I acknowledge that Jennifer is correct with respect to the need here for a new lead agency circulation, in that the prior circulation did technically expire with the issuance of the NECD on the prior project, which was, one, different than this, and, secondly, was the subject of a conditional approval resolution that since has expired because of the failure to meet the conditions and requirements within the required timeframe. So that's just a little, you know, a little background, I think, that comes into play here, and before you move on to further public comment.
And before we do that, I think I need to apologize, because I thought that we had circulated again, and obviously we didn't. I thought we had, so yes, that has to be done. Okay, who's next?
At first, we have to get a handle on the scale of the project to identify, in fact, who the other agencies are, you know, in terms of DEC, coastal zone, health department, whoever else would be involved, including the possibility of county DPW coming back into play.
Hi, my name is Susan Coff, and I am the owner of the property immediately to the south of this driveway for the flag lot that goes to Astor Courts. And I've been before this board many times in the past. I haven't seen you for a long time, but many of you know my property and what my husband and I have done to restore our property. And I submitted a letter to the board, and I hope that each of you got a copy of it, and if you did, that you had a chance to read what I wrote about my reactions to this proposal. And I think I will skip talking about the building. I have no comments about that in terms of personal use, of how you want to use your property. But I want to focus on the fact that this is a change of use, even though the architect is talking about the fact that this is a building that will be used in the spirit of how it was used before. But let's think about that for a minute. Before, it was a private residence for very wealthy people who didn't charge their guests to stay over and have a good time. That's the first concept. So this is a commercial use of a property, not a residential use. It's a change of use. These people who were very wealthy, the Astors, weren't there all the time. They had buildings in other places. People were not there, guests were not there all the time having parties. So the impact of this change of use will be, I think, dramatic on the neighborhood. And I want you to focus on the neighborhood, who we are, how we choose to live, and how this building will impact us. And I thank Jennifer very, very much for her words about the neighborhood, and I agree with what she has asked you to look at. And I too ask you to look at the impact on the neighborhood in terms of music, light, traffic, air pollution, possible liability accidents. That's a narrow road. That flag lot has a narrow road going back there. There's no turnaround. There's no real space, I don't think, to pull over to the side. These are very, very important issues. The other thing that I want you to think about is the fact that I've been there for over 30 years, and things have happened along River Road that I never thought could happen. Valour, which is now a private residence, everyone thought that could only be a commercial use in our residential neighborhood, and they had weddings and they had loud music. And one day, the owners of Valour sold their property to some people who turned it back into a private residence. Things that we think must be commercial don't necessarily have to be commercial, they can be residential. When Kathy and Arthur purchased this property, rumors were all about, "Isn't this wonderful? They're going to save the building." Yes, it was wonderful. They saved the building, they did beautiful things. They knew they were buying a very large house. They knew it, there was no surprise. So the question comes up, why is there a desire now for a change of use? Think about it. And think about whether you really need to fear that if we don't allow this change of use, what the repercussions to our community will be and to the character of this building. Will it fall into disrepair? Will people stop caring about it? Because I think that is a little bit of your concern. So I just want you to step back and think about this for a minute, should that be a valid concern. Now, I'm all for adaptive reuse. My property is an example of adapted reuse. So the question to me is, scale. 12 rooms. What does that mean? Please think about that. Does 12 rooms mean maybe a maximum of four people per room, 48 people? And then maybe there will be, will there be a wedding there? How many weddings? What will the noise level be? Will it be at night? What will the traffic patterns be? When we had weddings there, and you remember the Clinton wedding, Cave Reli's property was used as a transportation hub for the party. So there were vans, people would drive into Cave Reli's property, park, and they would get into vans to go to the wedding venue. And since, by the way, that wedding, there have been two more weddings. Now, not against parties and not against weddings, but what will the controls be on all of this? I don't think that we really have in our system a way of oversight. And maybe that's something that you can think about also. When you create stipulations, if you're going to allow this use, what will be the mechanisms for oversight? Is it me who's going to be saying, "Oh, my God, they're having another loud party, and it's too noisy, or there's too much light," or whatever it is? And then I'm going to call the zoning enforcer, and that's how it's going to be, that the neighbors are going to be the people who are policing the use of this? I think that would be destructive to our relationship. I'm trying to have a good relationship with my neighbors, and I don't want to be a policewoman in this. The other thing that concerns me a great deal is that wouldn't this set a precedent? We live on River Road, along the area where we call it the Great Estates, large parcels of land. Now, I have 50 acres, I've done a subdivision, but I have 30 acres under conservation easement, they're never going to change, they're always going to look the same from River Road. But then you look further north, and you wonder, is Annie Leibowitz, one day, going to say, "Well, I have this large parcel of land, and I have this very big building, and I just have these smaller buildings," and she's thinking to herself, "Oh, the taxes are getting really high. How can I meet my obligations?" Iliana, up the road, and she has hundreds of acres, if they can come in with proposals too, I assume, and say to you, "I have this idea about how I can use the property." Now, they don't have 20,000 square feet. Annie Leibowitz has a very large building, she may have at least 10,000 square feet. I've been there, I don't know. But the idea of precedence, if you allow this change of use, is this a good idea for our community? I ask you to think about this also. With regard to my own personal protection, I've written to you about that. Kathy Hammer was very nice, she contacted me. She wants to put in some trees as a buffer, and it's mostly a light buffer, it might be a sound buffer, we even marked the trees. And I hope that you at least place this as a requirement of approval for this special permit, that it's written down, it's not just being neighborly, it's written down. And I ask you to further require that fencing put in, because the lower branches will get eaten by foraging deer, and we've all seen that. So if I could have some fencing along this corridor that's shown on the map, I haven't checked it out, but I'm sure it's in the right place, along with some screen, some evergreen tree screening, that will at least protect my property from some of the visual aspects of vehicles going back and forth, and maybe, of course, some sound as well. It will be a buffer for some sound. And I just want to point out to you about the history of my building also, if you haven't had a chance to read my submission. My property is going to celebrate its 200th anniversary. Three of my buildings predate the 1902 Astor Courts casino. And that, it's not as grand, obviously, it doesn't look like that building, it's not written about in magazines and books, but I think it's just as important. And I ask you to think about the kind of protection that I require if you permit this to go through. And the last thing I want to point out to you is traffic. And that is all the traffic that comes down River Road, coming over the Kingston-Ryancliff Bridge, and goes up Astor Drive. I've pointed it out to you in my submission. We are talking about hundreds and hundreds of people and cars that are now coming up these roads. We have traffic from the nursing home. We have the people that work at the nursing home, we have the visitors at the nursing home. Then we go up Astor Drive, and at the other end is the hospital, and the hospital, as you know, is expanding, so there's traffic getting to and from the hospital, and ambulances that go from Ryancliff to the hospital. And I pointed out to you in my letter that Astor Drive is dangerous. My daughter had a very, very bad car accident on Astor Drive. There's no middle divider, and another car was coming straight at her at the crest of the hill by the Heller property. So now, we are considering the possibility of even more traffic coming from Astor Courts. Maybe something has to be done with Astor Drive, it's a consideration. Or it impacts how many rooms you will allow them to have. So I bring this all up as, please think about these things, please think about the neighbors, how we feel, and keeping this a residential neighborhood. We all think of it as a residential neighborhood. And if you think about the people that are living in these buildings, we're all the homeowners. None of us are commercial enterprises. Annie goes to her house. Kathy goes to her house. I live in my house. Stan Litchens lives in his house. We're all living in a residential neighborhood. It's not a commercial neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I just have a question.
Yeah, we have to ask you to come up to the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Lynn Itskowitz, I live at 214 River Road. I'm a little bit confused, will weddings be permitted under this application?
It would depend on the scale, I would assume, of the wedding and the size of it.
Okay. I just have one comment with respect to use. The last wedding, which I think was in October, backed up traffic on River Road for a solid half hour, and it was very observable to me. So I would ask you to please think about that while considering this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Good evening. My name's Kit Layborn, I'm a resident of Ryancliff, and I want to speak to something that no one's talked about yet, but I think has remained to the consideration of the panel, which is the, I want to speak about the feeling of Parkland, the actual beautiful arrival at their house, Kathy and Arthur's house, that they've done on their own nickel. This map suggests just the teeniest little strip of land. And I can see how if you just looked at the map and you didn't visit the site, you might worry about that. But I just want to say that in real life, when you're there, it's a beautiful rolling road that comes in, it's been beautifully cleared, so there's a sense of the topography rolling. Astor, the hill on which the property, where the building itself, has been very judiciously cleared in a way that I think will look great for years to come. And I just want to conclude by saying that the same fine aesthetics and the same deep commitment to highest-quality work that Kathy and Arthur have done on their house has also been done on the land, and I'm sure that will continue and get better if it came and in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there someone back there?
Yes.
Thanks, Richard.
Well, I'm Richard Creed, I own the Ankeny Farm on 44 Ryan Road. I think I share the biggest, well, probably the biggest border with Astor Courts, so I really, I think I have a dog in this fight. But anyway, it's really happy to see that the neighbors all get along well, and it's just, it's great to see. As the owner of the Ankeny Farm, we share a thousand-foot property line with the Astor Courts property. It is important that I weigh in on their planned adaptive reuse to country in one status. That was put in the comprehensive plan, I think everybody knows about it, unless we're going to change a comprehensive plan, you know, it's a permitted use whether you like it or not. From a personal point of view, I fully support the application, but as the owner of the adjacent property, my support is more conditional, and this whole thing is about change. What Kathy and Arthur have there is an anachronistic, anachronistically complex facility, to say the least. I don't know what to call it, casino, gymnasium, party palace. It was designed for the Gilded Age. My father always said if he owned it, he would have torn it down, and I have no doubts he would have torn it down. And, you know, what the hell else are you going to do with it? But Kathy and Arthur sort of made a believer of me. I don't, I really don't know how they do it, but what they've done is they've, you know, come up with an idea, have had some contemporary amenities, you know, amenities, cut in a couple of French doors, restore the original party kitchen downstairs, kind of update the place to modern standards, and all without destroying a building with a pretty good architectural pedigree. And I know it's not about the building, it's about the use and what we're doing around here, but it is, it is about the building, and it's what adaptive reuse is. And as a neighbor, I'd say what they're proposing is a no-brainer. I don't know. Back to my problem, the current owners of Astor Courts seem to understand and enjoy that their building is next to a working farm. But I'm not certain, and by the way, it's a commercial farm. I'm not certain that the future owner, and there will always be a future owner, somebody else put this, you know, brought this up, is going to feel the same about being next to a farm. And so I guess the best thing to do is, let me use an example to make my case. A new owner buys a property, you know, applies for variances, variances are granted, they sort of triple the, they triple the number of structures on the property, an adjacent property, and then they basically complain when their neighbor decides to do something, you know, change their property. So it's, like I said, welcome to the neighborhood. My neighbors seem to take great pleasure in thwarting one another's efforts to do anything. Curiously enough, they all seem to forget they live next to this Curiously enough, they all seem to forget they live next to this ugly six-story behemoth called a nursing home, that has lights on 24 hours a day, thousand car trips in and out every day. In fact, Ms. Koff, Astor Courts, Stan Litchin, Annie Liebovitz, Ankeny Farm, and that new owner, five of the seven owners who actually own 20 acres in the so-called HP20 district, all share an unattractive view of Ferncliff Nursing Home. Presumptions aside, this town got away with grand larceny when they stole these owners' rights by imposing 20-acre zoning in the last comp plan, and the other myriad of zoning restrictions in the area. So given the reality of this behemoth and all our view, I mean, living next to a, living next to this stupid six-story building, um, I sure hope we don't let some ginned-up restrictions overly encumber, uh, Arthur and Kathy's plan. I really don't. I, um, again, as the owner of Ankeny Farm, all interested parties must have an understanding of the sights, odors, and especially the noise a farm can produce, especially since any and all may be offensive. Simply said, I don't support this if there's any possibility of getting complaints and letters from nasty lawyers about running a farm as I see fit in the future. It's important to recognize the potential for the Ankeny property to impact, uh, the adjacent owner's view shed with, with respect to use in, um, including the prospect that my property may be passively or actively reforested. Uh, we must acknowledge that there's a prospect that the Ankeny Farms' use status will likely change in the future, including the possibility of subdivision or profound use change within the guidelines of the HP20 district. Um, I'm not immune, I'm not immune from economic realities as everybody else's. Um, as far as the proposed plan is concerned, I see very little impact with respect to their planned building modifications. They appear to be keeping all the changes within the current footprint of the existing structure, and the rooftop rooms are kept neatly below the tennis court roof height. I am, however, concerned with the possibility of a parking lot for 25 cars in full view of my carriage house residence. There will be a visual impact if lighting is not done properly, and this certainly concerns me, and it's your job, or somebody's job. I want to avoid the situation we tolerate with the nursing home with respect to lighting, and I do mean 24-hour-a-day lighting, especially in the winter months, where I can see that. Um, as much as this community seems to abhor development, the economic realities dictate the necessity of change for both Astor Courts and perhaps all properties in this town. The current comprehensive plan with its exclusionary zoning of the HP20 designation presents multiple hardships for people whose ownership predate that, uh, action. It's me, Sue Koff, Astor Courts, none more so than Astor Courts. My only fear for supporting this action may be the fact that the current or future owners may, of the adjacent properties, will prevent me from doing my own, uh, development if I choose to do so. So, and so it happens. This is a good plan, this is a good, this is a good use. Um, that road, that road coming in there, it was approved, that's a fine, I've been driving that road for years, that's a fine road, that's, that's, again, that's, that would be a really ginned-up thing. And for somebody to say that, you know, when we started talking about conference center, when I think conference center, I think far more use than country in one. And, um, I've been to big parties there, I've been to big parties where they've shuttled people in, and people that have driven in. The place is adequate, I've never seen a, I've never seen a problem there, and I don't anticipate a problem in the future. I think we just all have to live together.
Thank you, Richard. Who would like to speak now? Yes?
Hi, I'm Carl Kelly, the executive director of Arch Care at Ferncliff, the big, ugly nursing home.[846.41][846.41](Laughter) That's been there since 1972, anyway.
Could we offer you a cookie?[854.43][854.43](Laughter)
We, uh, we actually found out about this project on November 25th, um, we got a letter in the mail, um, not that we pay attention to all the local things going on, but when I got a letter in the mail, first thing I asked about was what, what was the narrative, and what was this all about? And we still don't have a good sense of what that's about. I tried to look into the zoning law and determine what country in one is, and I can't even find the definition in the old zoning law, so I don't know if you can tell me the definition of that, and what...
But, yeah, we can.
Because certainly, if you have a conference center, then there's new requirements for the frontage of the road, um, and there's different requirements versus a country in, but I don't really see any requirements for a country in, I think there's four different things that I read in there.
That's all there are, there are only four standards. Uh, if you saw me thumbing through the, the code, I was looking for a couple of things also, for everyone's information. Uh, country in definitionally, under the zoning law, the building, a group of buildings which provides commercial hospitality lodgings in which, and shelling through the residential accommodation for the owner or caretaker. The zoning law permits, subject to issues of a special use permit, a country in one and a country in two, as described more fully in Article 6, uh, certain, subquoted section. Uh, a country in one, if you go to that section, uh, essentially is a facility that can occur on either, uh, with access from either a county or state highway, which distinguishes it from a country in two. Uh, it also can exist on a parcel of 50 acres, while a country in two requires 250 acres, uh, and a country in one is, must have a minimum of six, but not more than 12, guestrooms. Those are kind of the, uh, the, the overall standards. The other thing that I took a look at was, um, what is the, uh, the use conference center in the HP20 district? And in the HP20 district, a conference center, assuming it can co, could coexist with a country in one, uh, can exist, uh, assuming that the parcel on which it lies is at least 40 acres in area, which is the, which is the case here, uh, and is restricted at any point in time to accommodating no more than 75 guests at a, uh, at an event. So loser, you know, other than that, it has to meet, you know, certain engineering criteria, et cetera. Uh, but, uh, that's really the nature of small-scale conference, uh, center and country in one.
And I believe that would...
And the application here, at this point in time, as I pointed out earlier, is only for a special permit for country in one, uh, it is not a special permit for a co-use or, uh, any application involving this, uh, code enforcement officer and/or ZBA that might allow co, uh, co-use, co-principle use.
So I, I just want to say that we try to be good neighbors, um, and I'd like to say also that we did get a call from the Department of Public Works about modifying our stone wall, um, that a private contractor and a private owner next door wanted to modify our stone wall, which we said we did not want that modified. I didn't know the reason at the time, but I think I'm figuring it out.[1064.33][1064.33](Laughter) But I've been before you before, and I know the neighbors have issues of lighting. Questions I would have are road signs going up, because I know it was a very big challenge for me to get my sign in our entranceway. Will there be road signs? Will there be stop signs at the end of River Road? Um, questions like that, but I think the other speakers covered most of it, so, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, someone else this evening? Yes, Sally.
Good evening, I'm Sally Mazzarella. Um, it's always fascinating how we have people come up from our community and how well they could articulate both sides of an issue. And, um, you know, Jennifer, gosh, I've known you for I don't know how many years, uh, I respect you highly, you know, planning and zoning inside out, and, uh, as Art said, a lot of the comments that you made are legitimate concerns, and the planning board will be reviewing those concerns as they deal with the technical issues. And, uh, you know, as usual, I think they'll take a hard look and, uh, place conditions on the proposal. Uh, I have to say that I support this proposal, uh, when we think about the obligation we have as a community that has hundreds of houses that have been identified as historic, the numbers of houses that are on the National Register of Historic Places, uh, the landmark district that we have that is the most prestigious in the country. We have a responsibility to try and find creative ways of maintaining and saving these wonderful, wonderful properties for future generations to enjoy, and will probably mess it up from time to time, I'm sure. But I know in, uh, looking at the country in one and country in two, and, you know, how, how do you separate the two, and which one becomes more intensive and has a higher impact, and how do you address those issues? And, you know, which of those uses, uh, perhaps have to be a lot more sensitive because of the area that they're located in, and the road, uh, that will serve that facility. Um, I, I think that, um, you know, Kathy and Arthur, as said here several times, have, are incredible stewards of that property. Uh, it's a major responsibility, it costs a lot of money, and yes, it can be used as a residential property, and has in the past, and who knows, in a couple of generations from now, could possibly be used again as a single-family residence. But we're at a time and place where, um, for whatever reason, there's a request to, uh, develop an adaptive reuse that will keep intact the historic integrity of the property, uh, that, you know, looking at the, uh, number of bedrooms, the, the 12 bedrooms, uh, that does not have to have a tremendous impact on, on traffic and the activities and amenities that will be there for the people that use that facility. I think it's up to the planning board to look at what, what are the amenities that are being planned and what the impact may be. Uh, but I think overall, when you look at the spirit and the intent of this use, and the spirit and the intent of the comprehensive plan and the zoning law, uh, this use really, um, fits that property, and it could work wonderfully. And sure, it could be abused, and I think it's up to, uh, the planning board to, uh, try as hard as possible to prevent that from happening. Uh, I, I think that both Kathy and Arthur are making an honest attempt to continue, uh, to use this property with a great deal of public benefit, and that's the other, uh, piece of adaptive reuse, uh, is to attempt to get public benefit out of it, and to increase the longevity, uh, of the property. And again, as a community, we have an incredible responsibility of trying to be creative and protecting these wonderful, wonderful properties, and we have to thank the people that take on this responsibility. So I, I certainly approve the proposal, that's before the board, and I trust the board will look at the technical issues and the details that have to be addressed, and I'm sure the applicant's well aware of that, that, that's all going to be part of it. Uh, but I, I wish them luck with, with this effort.
Thank you, Sally. Anyone else this evening? Yes?
My name is Ed Haas, and with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read my letter into the record.
Sure.
I'm not writing this letter to speak on anyone's behalf, I'm writing this letter because the situation before this board represents, in my mind, a situation wherein property owners' rights may be compromised. As a property owner in this community, I feel it is important for the board to examine all aspects of allowing a currently residential joint driveway to be converted into a commercial use joint driveway. The Astor Courts Duffy Joint Driveway winds over both properties like a snake. At any particular place on the driveway, a driver is either on Astor Courts property or on Mr. Duffy's property. The driveway is not entirely on Astor Courts property. There are cross easements allowing both property owners to be on each other's portion of the driveway. There are at least two sections of this one-lane driveway where cars coming from opposite directions are not able to see each other. Should any accident occur on this driveway involving traffic to or from a commercial property, the present residential property owner would have a substantially increased chance of liability. The joint driveway has always been a residential joint driveway, not a commercial driveway. I do not understand how the planning board can legally approve an application that increases the potential liability of a property owner that has nothing to do with the application. By allowing the change to a commercial driveway, Mr. Duffy's potential liability increases substantially. That does not seem fair or within the scope of the planning board. The planning board should not allow an increase from a residential joint driveway to a commercial joint driveway unless both parties agree on the change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Please put your hand up so I can see. Yes?
I'm Pat Buckley, and I live on the east side of River Road, (laugh) not the west side. But on the east side for over 35 years, I can say we have been able to enjoy the amount of work and effort everyone on the west side has put in, from Eliana to Sue Koff, to the Ferncliff, well, what used to be Ferncliff Nursing Home, to, of course, Kathy and Arthur. But I do want to make a couple comments that over the last couple years, I'm finding it quite ironic that Mrs. Koff came up and pointed out what the future potential is with the west side of River Road, when she was actually one of the first people that put in for a subdivision on the west side of River Road. And yes, she has done a wonderful job with her estate, but in the midst of all those outbuildings, she has rental units, and, and reality is there, financial reality is there. So Mrs. Koff has done what Mrs. Koff has needed to do to support her property and to keep her property functioning in this economic times. Richard, he's going to do whatever he needs to do in order to keep his property from falling into neglect, whether it's a subdivision, whether it's an event place, whatever Richard ends up doing, unfortunately, we can't keep what we had. We'd all like to keep what we had 35 years ago, but it's not feasible in this financial times. Mr. Duffy, who's the most recent resident of River Road, came in, bought a single-family residence, and immediately applied for numerous variances, has numerous outbuildings, and has extended what was a single-family residence to multiple dwellings. And again, whatever his private concerns are, they're his concerns. This community does have to proceed, we have to be realistic about the financial times. Whatever Eliana does, she's created a wonderful working farm, and it has proven to be very effective for her. Valore, again, has changed into private hands, and once again, they have kept within the, the guidelines and the hopes we have to preserve buildings. Kathy and Arthur's plan for this building is superb. I saw this building when Mr. McGuire owned it, and it was a disgrace. The fact that they came in and brought in their life's blood and a number, a large amount of money to create what they have created, this inn might be what's going to keep it, keep it alive, keep it a functioning building, as opposed to falling into the disrepair it was when it was, unfortunately, with the convent as well as with Mr. McGuire. So I support this proposal, I think it's the best thing we can do, and I think it's really the only way we can secure this building for the future, for future generations, it has to be self-sufficient. A 12-room inn in this community is nothing. Look at what Steve Mensch is doing over at Grassmears. It, the community is expanding, we're becoming very tourist-oriented, and there's going to have to be places to sleep. A 12-room inn in this area, on this building overlooking the Hudson, I think you cannot find a better plan to keep this building back alive with its blood functioning and a historic site.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Put your hand way up so I can see it, because I can't see all that good.
Do you want to make further comment, if I may?
Sure. Sure, Richard.
I'm not certain, but you know hardship has an awful lot to do with zoning variances and I believe I heard on the Duffy variances, one of their hardships was the fact that there weren't places, quality places for people to stay in this town and that's why they needed their outbuildings. Perhaps I'm wrong, but I certainly heard that.
Thank you. Anything else this evening? Yes, Sue.
I just want to correct the statements. I wrote in my letter to you that I have a special permit to operate a B&amp;B in one apartment and that is all that I have. And it has functioned for 10 years and it is no longer functioning at the present time. So I just want to correct the record and I will remind you that 30 acres of our conservation is an online property.
Thank you. Okay, I guess I want to sort of reemphasize what Art said. The intent now is to have a number of working meetings with the applicants, with their professionals, with the planning boards, consultants to work out a lot of the issues that have been brought up, that have been certainly brought up tonight. I think as Art said, one of the reasons we wanted to have the hearing tonight was to really hear everyone's concerns, which I think have been very well articulated. I think that there may well be more. Please do not feel that you can't continue to submit things in writing. We will be continuing the public hearing to the first meeting in February, so everyone will have a chance to speak again. And at that point also, the results, the outcome of these working meetings will certainly be presented to you and if it's necessary to continue on with the public hearing, we certainly will. We want to make sure that this is done correctly, this is done properly in the interest of all people involved in this. You know, we're all one community and we all need to work together and I think that that's something that we all need to keep in mind. If no one has anything else to say tonight, anyone on the planning board have anything else they'd like to say tonight?
Michael, you should have a, number one, you should have the motion to continue the public hearing.
That was my next move.
I'd like to say one quick thing. I hope everyone on the planning board as well as everyone else here, of course, those of you who are against this, were as charmed and romanced as I was. I think it's a great start to a project and yes, I'm charmed and I'm romanced, but that doesn't take away from my objectivity when I look at the rules that I have to enforce. If the rules aren't followed, it's not going to happen. I will be very interested to see what the proposed detailed usage is, certainly to protect the neighbors and people who have invested their life savings, their life blood in the adjoining properties. So, you know, I don't think it's really necessary to stress romanced and charmed issues. I hope everybody was romanced and charmed because it's a nice building, it's a beautiful building and God knows, that's all we talk about is preservation of our beautiful historic structures. That's all.
Thank you.
Michael, my suggestions to the planning board, I guess is at least three-part. One is I would suggest that the planning board request that the applicant prepare and submit as soon as practicable a narrative regarding the proposed use, submit a narrative regarding the proposed use. Number two, I would suggest that the planning board authorize the chair to issue a notice of intent to serve as lead agency under seeker to the other prospective involved agencies based upon, certainly including DEC, the Health Department, County DPW, the Coastal Zone folks at both the town and state levels, et cetera, and any other parties, Parks and Recreation and any other parties that are required. And three, I guess, and also direct the chair to coordinate with the planning consultant in arranging for some technical work sessions as required, minimally involving appropriate members of the applicant's team, I guess coordinated by Mark and the town code enforcement officer, the planning board engineer and myself. Those sessions to be held, I think reasonably right after the first of the year. I don't think anything, it's going to be tough getting anyone together over the next two weeks. And number four is the planning board vote to schedule a continuation of this public hearing for seven o'clock or so on February 2nd.
Okay. Did you all get that down over there? Okay, can I hear, I guess I have a motion. Could I hear a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion by members of the planning board? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, okay. Thank you all for attending. We will be moving along. As I say, if people have other comments, things they want to submit in writing, things that you think the working sessions need to look at and consider that you don't think you heard tonight, please do so.
...
Isn't going to be held, so. The public hearing for Linda Friedman, unfortunately, there was a mistake made at the Kingston Freeman, they put the wrong date in for the notification, so we cannot hold a public hearing tonight. She's very comfortable with moving to January. It was not her fault, it was just one of those little things that seems to happen all the time now. But so what I'd like to do is ask for a motion to schedule her public hearing on January, I think it's January 5th?
January 5th at 6:35.
At 6:35.
Blackwood's already scheduled for 6:45.
Right. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Moving right along to our final public hearing for this evening. This is Southlands Foundation and Eric and Andrea Collin Bell, Jeremy Joyce, agent, Route 9 South at Southlands Drive, special use permit and site plan, conduct of combined public hearing as rescheduled from November 17th, 2014, on application for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of proposed cooperative project by two adjacent landowners to undertake a culvert repair dam pond improvement on the Southland Foundation property in the Rural Agriculture District and the Environmental Resource Overlay Districts and the town's LWRA being a type 2 action, excuse me, under seeker. Okay. I think what just we need to do is describe to the camera what your project is.
You're here. You're here.
I've described it, I mean, I'm going to repair an existing culvert with some minor adjustments.
Is what you asked for.
Yeah.
Just described it.
Okay. That's pretty much it. Hello.
The only thing I don't have a visual on is the sign.
Okay, I've been told the sign is there. So the sign is there.
Yes, I can attest to the fact that the sign is there.
I have the picture on my phone like I said.
You've got something better.
Yes, that's true. Technical difficulties getting it from my phone to the computer.
Well, I can verify it's there.
I guess we'll go right to the planning board field visit, Melody and Sharon.
Sharon?
It was, it was a fun visit.
Fun.
Yeah, it was fun. Yes, I think it'll be a big improvement, quick set and not an environmental problem.
And I would only add that Bob McDonald and Ryan were there with us, didn't express any issues or concerns at the meeting.
They actually submitted a memo prior to the last meeting indicating there were no CAB concerns, no CAB or WAC concerns.
So you guys are happy and content? Okay, so I guess CAB and waterfront advisory have happened. Anyone from the public? Hearing nothing.
You can close the public.
I would like a motion to close, it's a type 2 action under seeker, so we do not need a seeker determination prior to closing the public hearing. Could I hear a motion to Woody? A second. Jesse? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. The public hearing is closed and I have a draft resolution here. Okay, the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows in the matter of application for special use permit work within Water Resource Overlay Protection District and the site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of proposed cooperative project involving two adjacent landowners, the Southlands Foundation and Eric and Andrea Collin Bell, to undertake a culvert repair dam pond improvement on the Southland Farm Foundation property in the Rural Agriculture District and the Water Resource Protection Overlay District and the town's local waterfront revitalization area. All is described in submissions made to the planning board by Jeremy Joyce, representative and being previously classified as a type 2 action under seeker for which further environmental review is precluded. In consideration of the town's waterfront revitalization plan finds the proposed work, excuse me, occurring within the LWRA to be consistent with pertinent coastal policies concerning agricultural land use and stream and water body protection and maintenance. In consideration of the application for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning to authorize the proposed work within the WRO District 1 acknowledges receipt of a written communication from DEC that a state permit is not required for undertaking of the proposed work. 2 determines neither the use nor proposed work contravening any of the general standards for all special use permits set forth in Section 125-67 therein. 3 further determines both the use and proposed work to be in conformance with the specific standards set forth in Section 125-54C therein for work within stream corridors. 2 grants the above, that would be a 4, 4, grants the above cited special use permit pursuant to Town Code Chapter 125 zoning and subject to the following prerequisite conditions and/or requirements. A, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to the town of Rhinebeck with respect to the submission, review and processing of this application as set forth within the town's fee schedule and executed escrow agreement. B, securing of site plan approval for the proposed work in consideration of the application for site plan review and approval. 1, waives any further site plan requirements as might be construed to be set forth within Section 125-75C 2 of the Town Code. 2, approves the application for site plan approval pursuant to Town Code Chapter 125 and authorizes the chairman to so note on the site plan submission upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following condition and/or requirement within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to the town of Rhinebeck with respect to the submission, review, processing of this application as set forth within the town's fee schedule and executed escrow agreement. In taking this action, the planning board further authorizes the town zoning code enforcement officer to issue a certificate of occupancy or equivalent for the improvement upon his determination of the adequacy of the completed work and satisfaction of any other pertinent codes, laws, rules or regulations within his purview. Could I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? I will poll the board. Jesse? Richard?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
So you're all set, all you have to do is make sure you're paid up and I think Brennan can make sure of that and I think you're good to go.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, next on the list. It's not Rhinebeck 4 yet.
Mark Blackwood.
Right.
I probably can summarize this for the board very quickly. At the last meeting, the board passed a resolution, procedural resolution on the Blackwood project and tentatively determined that the board would hold a public hearing on January 5th, the condition being that in the interim, there was an interim requirement that the ZBA accept and begin the processing of an application, the required application for area variance. The application for area variance was accepted by the ZBA on November 19th and I believe the public hearing at least conducted, I don't know if it was closed or not, but it was at least opened on December 5th. The other question that, so that condition is satisfied, meaning that the tentatively scheduled public hearing for January 5th at 6:45 will be occurring on that project and in fact presumably has already been noticed to that effect. The second point that came up was the classification of the action under seeker, that portion of the action that's before the planning board, including the subdivision, the special use permits and the site plan. That package is a type 1 action under seeker. The applicant's counsel concurs with that. And in fact, what I've determined is that classification of the Blackwood project in a slightly different form was in fact considered by the planning board on March 3rd of 2014. A notice of intent was appropriately distributed by the board a few days later and 30 days, 30 or more days later, lead agency status by this board was confirmed. Unlike the situation earlier this evening where we heard of the seeker lead agency status on the Astor Courts project having expired with the issuance of a NEG deck, this particular lead agency designation is still in effect because the board never moved to the point of a determination of significance. Bottom line, we have a type 1 action, you are the lead agency, that matter is behind us. Further, I'd just like to report, I think on the responsiveness of the applicant, you'll remember that I raised, I think, seven or eight technical comments when reviewing the applications that were before the board last month. And I'd like to report that the subdivision map that was required, prepared by a licensed lands surveyor, was in fact prepared and submitted to this board a week or so after the meeting. The building floor plans and elevations that were not stamped by a licensed professional at the time of submission have in fact, in the interim, been stamped and signed by a licensed design professional and submitted to the planning board. The matter of review by the Dutchess County Health Department for proposed onsite sanitary has been fully resolved. The Health Department has advised that because the bedroom count is not changing, there's their policy that the existing systems will be employed and that no further review or design will be required by the Health Department. And a stormwater management design plan to complement the re-engineering report that was previously submitted was provided by KC Engineering two or three weeks ago and not reflected in my notes is that that plan was, has already been reviewed by the planning board engineer and the planning board's engineers' comments have been responded to by the applicant's engineer. So things are moving rather nicely in terms of providing the information that the board ultimately requires to consider. Again, public hearing is, will be conducted on January 5th as scheduled. No board action of any type is required.
Required tonight. And I would just mention that Melody and I did do the site visit up there and the only thing I had asked for is if we could just say a little narrative, a little something about how they're going to jack up the existing house they're going to save and how they're going to do it. And we've provided pictures of that, they have a firm that's going to do that, that has great, you know, experience in doing this. So I think that the applicant in this case has been extraordinarily responsive. I have heard of no issues from Rhine Cliff about this. My understanding is the public hearing with the ZBA was very, very well received, the project's very, very well received now. And I'm delighted to say that I've been told the applicant likes this proposal better than the first one, so it seems like this is going to be a win-win for everybody. So I'm delighted. So we will be able to hopefully get moving and, you know, wrap this up pretty quickly in January. Who knows, we'll see. But anyway, so moving right along yet again, the next order of business is Eli Wallach. Basically, there was, as I understand it now, I'll correct it when I go wrong here, which I probably will, the ZEO felt that there was a setback requirement that wasn't being met under the proposed subdivision that, and Mark, help me, I want to need it, that needed to be corrected. So basically, what Mark is doing is realigning one of the lot lines on the subdivision that came before us for approval, for us to do approval and rather than, my feeling, I spoke with Art about it, our feeling was this is not something that requires a reopening of the public hearing, going back to it, it's a fairly minor action within the property owned by the one person anyway. But, you know, it's up to you guys too, how you feel. Do you feel that it's something we need to reopen the public hearing for?
So what happened was is the law of subdivision on Ward River Road created two parcels prior to that, Eric Wallach made application for building permit and he was considering, started construction of the zone, which we were with the subdivision and in doing that subdivision, I created two parcels certified by a company, because this is two-fold, because we're also requesting a request for an extension of the approval. And in doing that, I read the code on that set for accessory structure minimum sub- year setback, so about a 20-foot setback off of the proposed property line. What led me to meeting with the ZEO was a further application for construction of one of the structures on the Wallach property, application for building permit, which after the ZEO reviewed it, I now actually go and ready to test it this Wednesday night, going in front of the ZBA for, by various applications. And they were all actually triggered by the interpretation of the accessory structure that was submitted to this board. Sorry to go through this, but this is how it.
No, this is good.
Went through this with the ZBA.
Better you than me.
Last week. It's, the garage is attached to the principal structure, however, it's in the front yard. And ZEO's interpretation is that garage is an accessory structure even though it's attached, so therefore it's in the front yard. And that being in the front yard, there's several other items like the pool and the poolhouse are also in the front yard. There's actually, there's an emergency generator that's There's actually, there's an emergency generator that ZEO is considering an accessory structure, that's in the front yard. And then when you take the aggregate of all these accessory structures, it's greater than what's allowed by the code. And then finally, just to be on the safe side while I did that, because although I did receive subdivision approval by this board, it's not been filed. So, I also included the barn, which I provided the 20-foot setback off from the subdivision, I included that in the application, being on the safe side because it's a single parcel now. So, that's in front of the ZBA. What I'm asking this board is, it was my interpretation that a 20-foot setback required for a sideline. The ZEO's determination is that it's a 50-foot setback required. That, those are listed in the bulk regulations. The code states 20-foot minimum, which I provided, is required in 50 feet. So, it's just, I made a small triangular change in the, you know, to, in the lot boundary, proposed boundary to have that 50-foot setback. Didn't really want to evade it because it doesn't really affect the project or aren't any significant, you know, physical features that are, you know, that are affected by this. You know, it's a simple change in the bounding line and so then it also affects the area too, so a minor change. So, there are really not any changes, no coverages or anything else. And it's been, hopefully, I completely, I completely review everything else with the ZEO, so I think I'm on board and I'm hopeful that the ZBA grants some variance this Wednesday night, since it's halfway constructed.
And neither of the two lots will be substandard, they will all be more than, beyond the five acres in that area. So, I, my feeling was we could just, the board itself could just approve the modification in the approved subdivision rather than have to open the whole process up again. But, does anyone disagree with that?
What I want to add to that, Michael, is my opinion was that also that the board could move forward because in this particular case, the subdivision plat remains conditionally approved and has not yet been signed by the chair.
Or filed.
If the plat had been already signed by the chair, then we'd be talking about an amendment to an approved subdivision plat. But this is still in that time between planning board resolution and satisfaction of conditions and ultimately signing by the chair. Therefore, the board is empowered to authorize the modification in the conditionally approved plat. And on the subject of conditionally approved plat, that's the second part of the request here is for time extension. It's for time extension to allow one of those conditions to be satisfied, the condition in question being the installation of the common driveway. And there's certainly no reason to deny that particular request. So, the draft resolution that you have, that I've prepared, you may wish to consider, authorizes the modification and grants the time extension for a period of six months as authorized under the subdivision regulations.
So, I will endeavor to read this through. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board, upon December 1st, 2014.
Michael, and you don't need to repeat A through H, which are recitation of previously, of the previous conditions.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, this typically says it's subject to the same conditions as previously existed.
Can I comment first?
Sure.
This is completely common sense and this is absolutely positively what we should do, but based on our preapproval last one, this slight modification isn't subject to public opinion at all? I mean, we're altering, regardless of how slight it is.
You're moving an internal line. I think that's the other justification. It's an internal.
Agreed, but it's still a property line.
And that's the question, Richard, whether or not the board feels this should be opened up again or if it is such a nature, the minimum nature, that it is not necessary.
In this particular case, it doesn't, absolutely doesn't.
In other cases, it would. If we're an outside between adjoining neighbors, something like that, adjoining properties would be different.
Would we be allowed to do the same thing if we're an outside line? I'm just curious if we're allowed to do this.
I don't think you'd advise to do so.
Right. We'd be allowed, we could do it, but I don't think the justification would be sufficient for us to do it.
Okay.
I think it would be challengeable.
All right, I'm good with that.
Whereas I don't think this would. Okay? But it's a good point you raise. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board, upon December 1st, 2014, requests by Mark Gominski, PE and LS, hereby access follows in consideration of applications to the Planning Board by Eric Wallach, the special use permit, conventional subdivision under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning and for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land in the matter of the proposed creation of two single-family residential building lots with access via a common driveway improvement from the entirety of 57.08 acres at 293 Wurtemberg Road in the rural countryside district, all as depicted within a four-sheet set of engineering drawings prepared by Mark Gominski, PE and LS and dated April 23rd, 2014 and being the subject of both a negative declaration, determination of non-significance, and a conditional approval resolution heretofore issued by the Planning Board in June 25th, 2014. One, determines upon consideration of proposed lot line modifications set forth on Mr. Gominski's sketchup, and we will get the date.
Sketch plan date.
The Eric Wallach Minor Two-Lot Conventional Subdivision will still.
November something, yeah?
We'll get it later. Will still to conform to all pertinent standards for large lot development in the RC5 district and to cause no significant adverse effects on the environment that would be avoided where cluster or some other non-conventional land subdivision technique applied and thus reaffirms its grant of the requested special use permit to authorize the proposed conventional subdivision of the subject parcel. Two, upon, further upon consideration of proposed lot line modifications set forth on Mr. Gominski's sketch plan, once again, we'll get the date, reaffirms its grant of subdivision plat approval for the Eric Wallach Minor Two-Lot Conventional Subdivision and continues its authorization to the Chairman to stamp and sign the subdivision plat upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within 180 calendar days with the Planning Board's adoption of its June 25th, 2014 resolution A through H, which I have been relieved of having to read. Three, extends for a period of 180 calendar days from December 20th, 2014 to June 19th, 2015, the deadline for satisfaction of each of the above cited conditions and/or requirements as set forth in the Planning Board's resolution of June 25th, 2014, and in doing so requires a status report thereon to be timely submitted to the Planning Board for consideration of its regular meeting of June 1st, 2015. Could I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? I will poll the board so you're all on record. Jesse?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Michael? Yes. Okay, you're good. Now, what we've all been waiting for? Well, Warren's not waiting. Oh, yes, yes, Warren's waiting for it. Okay, this is Rhinebeck Ford.
I've been waiting for it.
This is a sketch plan conference with the Planning Board, as rescheduled from November 17th in the matter of proposed lot consolidation, expansion, interior renovation, and exterior modifications to the existing auto sales and service establishment and installation of improved sanitary sewage disposal facilities. Gentlemen.
So, Mark and I had a couple of sort of pre-meets discussions with the Chair and Melody and it almost time to bring it to the full board and with Art as consultant. We started this a few years ago, so this may seem somewhat familiar to you, we were here before, and you should all have had a copy of this, but Rhinebeck Ford has an existing facility of something 9,300 square feet. They want to put a new facade in the building to bring in line with sort of Ford's energy for dealerships across the country, but at the same time, Ford wants to add additional showroom space, some offices upstairs, and additional service space on the other side of the building, which is about another 2,400 square feet. So, the total building would increase to about 11,300, 700 feet. Correct here, 11,700, 360 feet. Along the way, they're not proposing site plan changes, but they would like to rectify some issues with their sanitary disposal system that Mark's been working diligently out for some time, stormwater and so forth. But the primary goal here is for Ford's perspective is to get some more space in the building and to update the facade to look like what Ford deals their building should look like. Now, the Ford sort of approved image is this, this is their vision for dealerships across America. When we saw this with its sort of curving metal, what they call the iconic entrance in the middle and the curving facade and so forth, we felt that this probably wasn't a perfect fit for Rhinebeck.
It was not well received.
Aside from the fact that it wouldn't necessarily, you know, fit the building that they have there. But, in case you're curious about how to handle this in other Ford facilities, there are recent renovations to the Ford dealer in Gipsy and South Road and the Ford dealer in Hannibal Circle, near the traffic circle, neither which is a very happy fit of this sort of iconography on existing buildings, which try to do better here in Rhinebeck. And so, we looked at some sort of traditional Ford dealers and Lincoln dealers and some older car dealers. This one here is in the Rhinebeck area back in the 40s, there's a high park dealership in the same general period, and this one out in the Midwest with a more recent building, museum building actually based on it. But, talking about historical building in terms of commercial architecture and automobile-related architecture as opposed to rural architecture, just so there's some historical context. But, where we're going with this is to see what we can do with the existing building. And the existing building, I'm sure you are all clear with, looks like this. You've split beyond the monster truck, you can see the building. It's a Charlie Lowe, float roof, large windows, no particular architectural character, you know, it may not matter too much again because what you're trying to sell is not the building but the vehicles. But, to be said that they want a fresh image and Ford would love to help them achieve that fresh image, we put together a photo montage of the new and improved proposed Rhinebeck Ford, which has the same monster truck in the front because we did a photo montage, but in fact, the same building actually has a little more presence than it does. And what Ford has done as a major concession to the sort of Rhinebeck only is to put stone panels in the front of this building as opposed to the metal panels and the sort of concrete. So, there's quite a bit less glass, quite a bit less metal, and we don't have any curving metal sort of panel at the entrance, it's all stone panels around the side of these cutouts. And that's kind of where we are. We wanted to get the sort of sense of the board about this. We know that it may not be exactly what Rhinebeck would like to see, but what Ford and Rhinebeck is trying to do is of course, deal with Ford and Dearborn is willing to underwrite a certain part of the renovations, assuming it looks like what they want a Ford dealership to look like. And so, while we've negotiated back and forth with the Ford folks in Dearborn for over a year, saying, well, can you do this, can you do that? No, we can't do this. We've actually come a long way with them, but they've sort of thrown down the bomb and said, all right, look, you know, get this approved or you're just going to have to do this on your own, which means that Ford won't be getting Rhinebeck Ford money and Rhinebeck Ford may have to curtail some of their plans. So, this is kind of what Rhinebeck Ford is offering, getting a fresh, an improved facade in return for the modest additions at each end of the building and in dealing with some of the site issues again that Mark has been diligently struggling with for some time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is it higher?
Well, it is a little bit higher because we've got a straight line across the front and they have a little bit of upper office area at this end. It will look a little higher. Certainly not higher than the zoning district for me, but yes, right now what there is is a large service bay in the back, it's a tire and this is sort of flat roof area here, whatever, I don't want to stop it. The piece in the back, that doesn't change at all, you can just see that in scale, but the facade does sit, sit a little bit higher to kind of create, again, a little more presence behind vehicles, which is probably a good thing, I would say in this case.
Are you adding a second floor, basically?
Only a small area here for some additional conference rooms and all.
But there is, there's none right now.
There is, actually there is above the parts area in the back, there is a mezzanine with more parts stored, but there's not a full second story anywhere there.
And the last time, this was in front of the board, they changed owner somewhere over the last five or six years, right?
I think their other partners have come in. They just recently.
The last time we were here, in order to add, do any renovations or add any space, the whole sanitation thing, that's, that was a no-brainer. It's not something that they're trying to take advantage of, they have to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, I don't want to put words in the mouth, actually, I should probably.
All right, no, I'll wait on it.
Let the Mark address that.
So, tonight was to officially present, you know, the facade changes to the board. With regard to the site plan, I had lengthy discussions with Mike Moore, Melody, and Art and the President about what to do with the site. And there's been a change in management recently at Ford due to the passing away of one of the partners. So, and, you know, and part of that, you know, the site plan changes, you know, the idea here is to try to take advantage of Ford Motor Company's incentive to make the facade changes and therefore, you know, limiting what is being done on a site plan basis. So, you know, obviously the sewage disposal was one of the, you know, key components because of location relative to the town of Rhinebeck, and drainage swale, and then locating it in an area that is more suitable for onsite sewage disposal. It happens to be on another piece of property that they own. And so, you know, discussions have, you know, with the informal discussions with members of the board, that included combination of the properties. And so, trying, and just bringing that together with the new management of Rhinebeck Ford to, you know, include that with a sketch application so that, you know, it certainly simplifies the subject changes that is on a simple part all in. And it also provides some assurances to, you know, this planning board about, you know, further development of that joint property, which is, you know, is mostly wetland or a restricted area due to the wetlands. So, the goal with the, the goal tonight was to present these, you know, facade changes and then to come back next meeting with, you know, some discussions, further discussion about the site plan. Once again, we're just trying to minimize whatever site changes are being proposed to sewage disposal, maybe there's some, you know, other considerations in the board, whether it's lighting or landscaping, I'm not sure, wanted to be able to have that for discussion. But certainly off the table for this go-around is, you know, previous discussions about expansion of parking area because of some of the zoning issues that we related into that. So, wanted to remove that so to clear the way to make the facade changes and take advantage of the incentives of the Ford Motor Company.
Will the signage be part of this application or is that something you're going to come back later?
No, it would be, it would be part of it, you know.
Something out by the road like Ford wants?
Right, well, it would be a summary of existing signage and anything that is proposed and then, you know, makes reference to, you know, performance in the zoning code of the town.
Mark, the previous discussions we've had on the Ford Motor Company, the applicant, and I think you know where I'm going, the applicant wanted to have roadways changed for the safety of loading and unloading cars.
Right.
Where is that in this application?
The, that was the intent, when there was going to be some additional parking and ability to change circulation on the property, change, you know, traffic circulation. That would be add parking at this time for the entrance, the two points of ingress and egress, you know, basically almost, we'll say one further to the north and one further to the south. Those would remain at this time. Not to say that if they chose to come back and try to, you know, extend further discussion to the board about changing some of the parking on the property, that certainly could be addressed. But at this time, it's just keeping those two points on, if the ingress and egress on as they are now.
So, so the unloading of trailers of vehicles is still on a public highway? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the, what's the square footage of the new, of the building in total?
The proposed is 11,730. The addition is 2,400 and the existing is 9,330.
The lighting that's on the plan, is that what's there now or is that?
It's just, we're not proposing any changes on lighting.
They seem rather high.
It's a conforming use. It's, and the MLD expansion is.
Why don't you buy that good-looking dock across the street? You can park some cars over there and clean up the mess.
And then put a tunnel under 9,300.
There you go. Go right in there, you can offload all the cars.
Any other questions?
What's the, for new construction, does it cap on commercial square footage?
There is 8,000 square feet for retail, well, actually it's for all.
Retail and office, but.
Retail and office, but, but auto.
That's an addition, right?
Yeah. Automobile sales is apart from retail or office, right?
Right, we looked at that.
Yeah, we, I can believe we looked at that. Michael and I were talking, chatting about the same point.
We're going to need to go to the Z E O to see if, and get a determination because it is a little murky, if I may.
But automobile sales is a, you know, is a specifically defined use within the use table.
And a good bit of this, I think, is for maintenance, right? I mean, another service bay and things like that, so.
I thought it was just commercial.
I, I think it's actually 8,000, I think they extended it to everything commercial. Quite frankly, when they wrote this, it was supposed to just be retail specifically, but I think the way they wrote it, it covers everything.
That's how I remember it, everything.
Yeah, I think it covers everything.
Which would simply mean if he interpreted it the wrong way for you, you'd have to go get various.
Yes.
Right, yeah, that was, I mean, when we first started this discussion about facade changes, a good review of code, I thought that this didn't apply.
Actually, I'm not sure you'd need to get a variance because it's a special use permit to not build something more than 8,000 square feet. It's not a bulk or area regulation. So I'm not even sure.
Correct.
So, you see, if you don't apply for the special use permit to not build something bigger than 8,000, I mean, I have no idea. It's never made any sense to me. I have absolutely no idea.
We ran into a whole problem with tractor supply when they tried to renovate that building because it went past that.
I have no idea what it means. I have no idea how you apply this. I really don't.
It's no different than the 2,300 square foot rule.
But that's a, that is a, that's a regulation.
That's a special permit standard. It's a special permit standard.
But it's a standard. It's not a special permit under itself.
Bottom line, we're going to refer to the Z E O on that.
Exactly.
We just put it in touch.
So we're going to see you guys back in January to continue this sketch plan meeting. And if you're at the point where you really have a completed flesh outline, you're really ready to go with an application and whatnot, as we have done in the past, we may be in a position to move the whole process forward into the actual review. Proceed your.
Well, I guess also too, in the meantime, just maybe the board and the Z E O.
Yeah.
Just clarify this.
Yeah, because it is, it continues to be a bit of an issue. Yeah, I think Melody and I have seen this, I don't know if you guys have seen this up close. So, are we good?
Good.
All right. Season's greetings.
On the site visit, can you drive the monster truck?
You know, Pleasant Valley Ford, years ago when I worked out there, had two 427 Cobras. I'm just kind of wondering if maybe.
Okay, moving along.
All right, moving along. So much for my own interest in this. Okay, thanks, you guys. What we have now are a number of town board referral and I think we have four Z B A referrals and one, and one's, one thing which I think we can do with the Agnoli sign. As you may know, a Starbucks is going in.
Hold on, hold on, what about, what about giving the folks in back a chance first?
Well, I'm just going to get rid of this.
Oh, okay.
I mean, okay, Agnoli sign. They were going to put up the sign for Starbucks on the building, they're going into the, into the Stop &amp; Shop. And I, and I, we submitted to Ron, asked him to give us a determination on this, but, and we got it tonight. So let me read his determination to you, and this is why we're not going to do this tonight. Starbucks meets the fast food criteria for fast food and fast food in our, in our zoning law. And fast food requires both a special use permit and site plan approval before it can be installed and go on. But replacing another business coffee shop, not defined, gray area located inside another business building, appears would require site plan and special use permit. Can't approve sign at this time. Request board hold off until January 5th meeting to allow Ron time to thoroughly investigate and render an opinion. So that's what we're going to do with that.
And that's kind of consistent with the comment that I had in review, which was that all the other signage on the building refers to.
Their own businesses.
Generically refers to products.
Right.
It does not highlight a brand or franchise, another brand or franchise.
But the pharmacy, pharmacy is a separate entity.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't say, right aid pharmacy.
It's not like a C V S.
This could, this could say coffee.
This is replacing.
This could say coffee, but not Starbucks coffee.
But it's replacing a different part in there. I think maybe the bank is replacing the Dunkin' Donuts.
The bank is in the middle.
Somewhere.
Some kind of meat.
And the Dunkin' Donuts is where.
I have no idea. I guess they've been, I haven't been in there in a long time, so I don't know.
He's correct.
But they're just, that's, anyway, that's what the problem is.
Starbucks is in the location that Dunkin' Donuts vacates.
But Dunkin' Donuts doesn't have a sign on the building.
So effectively, it is kind of replacing a fast, but it's not a push-pull.
But unfortunately, it's not a push-pull.
It's a new operation.
And Dunkin' Donuts doesn't have a sign.
What's a push-pull?
Where you just take your name and put it over there, put my name on the top of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but effectively, it's very similar, higher end.
Well, let's say if Stop &amp; Shop put in their own coffee shop, then we wouldn't be discussing it, you know what I mean? Because it's not under the same corporate ownership, whatever, it becomes a different entity.
Interesting. Yeah, I think there was some, when Dunkin' Donuts was originally in there, when it came in with Stop &amp; Shop, I think there was, I'll call it some sly of hand. It just kind of, there it was.
But there was never a sign on the outside of the building, so there was never any signage. And there was a Staples in there at one time too, wasn't there?
Yes.
Wasn't there?
Really?
And then that disappeared.
Okay, then that brings up the question, what about the bank?
What bank?
There you go.
Yeah, the bank is Stop &amp; Shop.
How'd they pull that off? Slide a hand again.
They're not a fast food, but they're not a fast food.
But they don't have a sign.
You're right, they're also not hard on the same.
They're asking for a sign, then it's our problem.
Also not part of the group, for sure.
Right, right.
All right, we'll wait till you.
Anyway, moving right along now that we've completely filled Ron's calendar for the next three months.
Town board.
Sure have.
This is the referral that, on the waterfront, Rhine Cliff waterfront plan, that I think, you know, you all got, we all read, we all wanted time to really go over and look at it. And I hope that I pushed the right button so you all got Art's draft of our recommendation.
Which was then revised and I think Joan submitted, Joan transmitted the slightly revised copy.
So I hope that you all got that and were able to take a look at it. We have the principles here, if anyone has any questions.
I did, but I don't have a copy in front of me, I don't know what, I guess I didn't get, my question was, does anybody have a copy right here for the waterfront?
I didn't print it.
Do you have one, Michael?
I don't, no, I didn't, I didn't even print it out. My printer's kind of.
My question was, why, why did we specifically go?
Was there a copy to send?
No, of your, your draft.
Of your comment. Oh, here it is.
Got it.
Why, why is there a note in here about the planning board noting the word revitalization should be?
It's a correction, it's just a correction in the title of document. The L W R P is the Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. It's not the Local Waterfront Redevelopment Program.
But our code reads.
No, it's not a code, it's not a code, it's a reference, it's a reference to the L W R P. That's all it is, it's correcting a reference to the L W R P. Saying, saying the proper term revitalization needs to be used and not redevelopment.
And the L W R P is not the law, it's just the plan, but chapter 180.
So is our comprehensive plan, it's just suggestion.
Right.
But I asked this only because it would seem that we're saying you can bring it back to life, you can revitalize what's there, but this would, could come across as an attempt to keep anyone from changing anything down.
This is, this is, this is not a, not a comment on the draft plan that was submitted for review. It's simply a correction of the language that's used in the excerpt that's cited here.
Okay.
It's referring to the L W R P.
Maybe it's not clear, but that's all it amounts to.
Any other questions for, did you all get a chance to read it?
Yes.
So I pushed the right button this time.
As Michael and I, I discussed, the, the bottom line is, the position that's taken by the draft report that prepared for your consideration, modification consideration is that, you know, it's a darn good plan. It's an excellent physical design plan, it's got appropriately scaled improvements for sustaining, enhancing and accommodating expanded use of the, of the waterfront. It establishes a program in which the individual projects can occur as financial resources allow. It identifies what could or should be priority projects, but doesn't say that the sequence of projects is cast in stone.
Do we have dollar amounts on this?
No, there, there, so it's, no, there aren't dollar amounts at this point in time. It's an overall plan, it provides a 10-year framework.
Okay, my question there though is, given, who makes the decisions? The board down in Rhine Cliff?
Town board.
Town board.
Which is, which is?
They can pick any, one, two, all aspects of this plan and implement them.
Well, actually, they have to come to us first.
It's okay, but it's up to them because we're telling that in this statement, from what I read, we're telling them, you can pick and choose as financial resources become available, but there's no guarantee after 10 years that the whole thing reaches fruition and we're not asking for any kind of real hardcore numbers or plan. We're just saying, go for it, you have all those pieces, go figure out how to do it as money becomes available. Isn't that kind of, that's not a plan.
No different than the park plan.
Well, I wasn't going to bring that up, but that's exactly what this is like.
It's a, it's a plan.
We've got the same thing.
But you've got to be flexible, it's a public, it's a public works thing and if they get, if you, if you get the lottery, donate a million dollars.
You build the house, you do it in a logical manner and you have a plan.
Yeah.
You have a plan.
Yeah.
We're not asking for a plan.
You know, it's not, it's not set forth in that basis. And the balance of the, the document, as the planning board is supposed to advise, the planning, the town board advises the town board of certain procedural requirements that the town board needs to meet, needs to meet as it considers the adoption of the plan. And secondly, reminds everyone involved that any review, any adoption of the plan, any environmental review that's conducted at this point in time is on the basis of the overall plan. It's not on the basis of these project, specific projects that arise.
But safe to say, we could strike all that verbiage about this can be implemented and costs can be, money can be applied as it comes in. We can strike all that from the planning board's recommendation, we're just concerned with the overall plan and how it looks and how it works.
Well, I think the planning board needs to take a position as to, as to whether or not the planning board believes that the, the overall position taken, that what, what is appropriate is to get that physical design plan in place and to worry a little bit later about, about the scheduling of projects as resources allow, is a reasonable approach. If you don't think that's a reasonable approach, I guess you need to say so.
Well, I'm, I'm saying it right now.
Yeah.
I don't think it's reasonable to, for us to sit here and say, this is the plan, this is a great plan, don't worry about the financial aspect and the implementation of this plan, don't worry about that now, let's get it approved first. Kind of like our healthcare that we just approved in the U.S. Let's get it approved first. Let's have a plan.
Some people do.
I don't, I don't see that it's such a terrible thing to have a plan. So my recommendation would be, I would suggest that someone puts down some kind of a sequence of events, how it will be reached.
I don't think they're smart enough to do that right now and I don't think anyone running an operation like that, would any one of us in this room come up with the same thing? I don't think we can. It's a, it's a pie in a sky proposal if all the stars line up. That's what I look at it as.
So I think, but I need to make a question here is, if I offer you three cookies, do I not have to read this? I have to read this?
Well, the only other thing I want to say in, in terms of what I was responding to, to Richard, is that there's recognition here that, again, you're dealing, the town board is dealing only with the overall plan. As decisions are made to proceed with individual projects, and that, those decisions would involve not only financing decisions by the, by the town board or financing in terms of local revenues or, or accepting grants or whatever, every one of those projects also has to be reviewed by the planning board under the zoning code and also reviewed for compliance with other regulations and reviewed under SEAKER for the, for the project specific due.
Consistency review. I think Rod wants to say something?
Yeah. I mean, I'm just. As I approach the microphone.
I just thought maybe.
The, just because we're here and our town board liaison is here as well, I will say this first, just in a matter of explanation, because I don't really think we've talked to you too much about this. The reason why it's put together the way it is, is in anticipation, it's not in anticipation that the skies are going to open and three or four million dollars fall out that nobody's responsible for. It's that there is the CFA funding process and the other grant funding processes which look for these types of approvals to be in place on a governmental level so that we can go and apply for loans and, correct me if I'm wrong, Elaine, not loans, and apply for grants. Those grants are all participatory grants, a percentage has to be shared, typically is shared by the government, by the municipality. So when that, say, CFA application is made, we are, the town board and town Rhine Beck is in agreement with what we're applying for. So if there is, my example has been, at the process of putting together this, this master plan, ADA improvements for public places. This waterfront rates fairly low on a scale of, as it was evaluated up and down the Hudson River for ADA accessibility. There may be money available for that. If there is even a, a, a framework of a plan adopted, which is a requirement of the grant that we have now from the D E C, if that framework is adopted, our status and ability to get the grant, say, from the future CFA process is elevated greatly. So if that's the portion that's available in a particular funding cycle that can fit into the framework of the overall plan, then we, the committee, in concert with the town board and visiting the planning board, of course, comes and says, this is, this is what we're going to apply for, this is how it fits into the framework and you get that checks and balance as a planning entity, the town board as the, the partner in essence with the state. So that's, that's what it does. No one just gets to run off, but we have to create an outline of things that fit together and we intentionally did not put dollar amounts to those particular items because none of them are being evaluated individually right now, as Art had indicated to you.
So much of it is a pipe dream. Is there a, you know, a list that kind of floats around, everyone wishes for on those grants? Are there three different grants that are already being tied up? You know, I'm just curious how.
Yeah, well, there's, there's a series of drawings in there, in the, in the document and they show how elements all fit together, from ADA improvements to potential additions to the south, potential additions to the north, how all those things fit together. But what those pictures incorporate in the exhibits attached are all the elements that we discussed, everything that we went through for the last eight, nine months or more, maybe longer for some, elements of, that could be, could be invoked there, from kayak dock, from crew team racing, from some sort of better relationship with the railroad to be able to extend a walkway out, to spud barge, to that sort of thing. So they're all fit together on a plan that can be a part of any CFA funding application or any grant application as those funds became apparent. One thing we've learned, that there is nothing consistent year to year. And Elaine, if you want to say something, you're much more versed in this process than we are, but that's, that's what we've learned.
Process for obtaining these grants and/or?
Yep, certain things are, certain things reach a different level of importance. Habitat re-establishment along the Hudson River is something, Dan Miller, who's a local resident, is one of the D E C people that, estuaries program that deals with that. So they have money for habitat restoration along bulkheads, for instance. The ADA thing that I mentioned was, is an item, but in two years from now, it may be, it may be a different element. I don't, I don't know what it is. But we've tried to create with everybody involved, an overall picture that probably will need to be looked at again in five or 10 years, especially if some portions of it are able to come through. But the committee can't just take off and go, it has to come back and work with the board, this board and the town board.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is read this missive, which I'm told I have to do.
I think you can, you can skip the, the excerpt from the, from the executive summary, which is, which is number one and then just go.
Okay. All right. The planning board believes the waterfront revitalization master plan sets forth an excellent physical design plan with appropriately scaled improvements for sustaining, enhancing and accommodating expanded use of the town-owned waterfront known as Rhine Cliff Marina. As such, the waterfront revitalization master plan establishes through the design plan a framework within which individual projects may occur as financial and other resources, which may in some cases be targeted to certain types of improvements become available. The master plan does so without setting forth some cast in stone sequence within which each of the elements of the design plan must be undertaken. The master plan, however, both recognizes certain priority projects that should be undertaken as soon as resources permit and establishes a reasonable time period, some 10 years for completing implementation of the overall plan. As part of its initial consideration of the waterfront revitalization plan, the planning board recommends a full E A F Part 1 be prepared. The L R C group responded to draft full E A F Part 1, which was reviewed by the town planning consultant and then modified by the L R C group and is now set forth under date of, and we'll get that date. As part of its review of the waterfront revitalization master plan, the planning board has examined the modified full E A F Part 1 and prepared with the assistance of the town planning consultant, the attached full E A F Parts 2 and 3 for consideration by the town board, by the town board, when in its role as secret lead agency, it considers adoption of the master plan. In completing the proposed full E A F Part 2, the planning board has identified no significant adverse impacts associated with the adoption of the master plan, and recommends the town board issue as indicated within the full E A F Part 3 a negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance under Seeker."
Michael, I'd just like you to stop right there. The, I prepared a full E A F Part 2. It's a very simple E A F Part 2, but basically identifies no adverse significant impacts associated with the adoption of the plan itself. So therefore, there is no, no Part 3 required, and I have completed for consideration one timely by the town board, a determination of significance to that effect. That determination of significance assumes that the town board will be considering in its, when moving forward in that regard, will be considering the report by the planning board and other reports that should be forthcoming from the Conservation Advisory Board and the Town Waterfront Advisory Committee, not the Rhine Cliff Advisory Committee. So that's just mentioned. But if the board acts on this, then I will provide the clerk, just simply, I've got a hard copy of both of the Part 2 and Part 3 that can then be passed along as part of the planning board's report.
Did you get all that down?
Yes.
"In doing so, the planning board has considered the coastal policies set forth in the town's local waterfront revitalization program, and believes the waterfront revitalization plan, master plan, to be consistent with pertinent coastal policies identified in pages 37, on page, at page 37 of 41 of the master plan."
Word believe, believes, because it is not the planning board's authority to determine consistency. It's W A C and then the, the agency. So it's simply a matter of appropriately using the term believes.
"In doing so, the planning board notes requirement under Town Code Chapter 118 waterfront consistency review. The town board refer the waterfront revitalization master plan to the town's waterfront advisory committee, W A C, for review in this regard, and then consider the W A C's review in issuing a coastal policies consistency determination, L W R P consistency determination, as part of its forthcoming consideration of adoption of the master plan. In so doing, the planning board has also considered the relationship of the waterfront revitalization master plan to the town comprehensive plan, and believes the master plan dovetails well with the town comprehensive plan, as a more detailed sub-area plan for an important community resource, the town-owned Hudson River waterfront within the hamlet of Rhine Cliff. The planning board recommends the town board also issue a finding to this effect in its forthcoming consideration of adoption of the waterfront revitalization master plan. In consideration of the above, the planning board looks forward to considering under its site plan review and approval, special use permit and/or wetland permit authority, individual projects as they are brought forward in future years to implement the waterfront revitalization master plan. The review of each such project will necessarily include a project-specific, on a project-specific basis, consideration under Seeker of environmental impacts, consistency with coastal policies, and conformance to standards and/or requirements set forth within such regulations as Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, in the matter of underlying land conservation district, the Rhine Cliff overlay district, and the flood fringe overlay districts, components of the water resource overlay district, Town Code Chapter 120 wetlands, and Town Code Chapter 73 flood damage prevention, as well as those set forth within pertinent state and/or federal agencies." Could I hear a motion to approve?
移除
Could I hear a second?
Right.
Is there any further discussion? What I'll do is I'll poll the board so everyone can, you know, get on the record. Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Jessie?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Go forth and prosper.
This includes, this includes the...
Okay, we have, we have four lovely items here from the Z B A. The first one is Carolyn Blackwood. This is the application, the area variance, to increase the floor area of her project from 2,962 square feet to 23, from 2,300 square feet, I'm sorry, to 2,962 square feet. Let me just read the, read this to you. "The town of Rhine Beck has reviewed upon referral the application for area variance submitted by Carolyn Marks Blackwood, Z B A case 876, in the matter of authorization of an increased floor area of 2,962 square feet instead of the otherwise authorized maximum of 2,300 square feet for single-family dwelling at 64 Grinnell Street in the Rhine Cliff Hamlet overlay, the Rhine Cliff Hamlet and Rhine Cliff overlay District 1. The planning board finds the proposed increase in permitted floor area to raise no significant planning, zoning, environmental issues in consideration as a related application for subdivision plan approval under Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land to merge the parcels, a total of .61 acres, and the related application for certificate of removal or demolition, special use permit, and site plan approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, to remove the 1,030 square foot, 1997 addition to her single-family dwelling, and replace it with a larger addition resulting in a net increase of 637 square feet to 2,962 square feet, and the undertaking of related site improvements, all is detailed in subdivision site plan and building plan documentation submitted to the planning board. Two, the planning board counters with a view expressed by Hudson River Heritage in its letter of December 1st, 2014, and likewise appreciates the efforts made by the applicant to modify her prior proposal to be much more consistent with the scale and character of residential development in the Rhine Cliff overlay district. Three, the planning board recommends the Z B A both consider the board's observations and additionally rely upon its own study of the facts in deciding this application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth in Town Code Chapter 125, sections 125 dash 124 C and D, including due consideration of the input of neighboring property owners and other stakeholders within the Rhine Cliff overlay district. Four, should the requested area variance be granted, the planning board will continue in its processing and review under both Town Code and Seeker of the above cited applications, starting with a combined public hearing scheduled for January 5th, 2015." Could I hear a motion to approve?
移除
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Moving right along, the next two, Edward and Arlene Pasquarelli and Joseph Romeo are related. It's not, it's not quite right, did it? They're joining neighbors. What happened with Mr. Romeo, he put in a pool, he put in some other things. It turns out some of this was on his neighbor's property.
Most of it.
No, most, okay, most of it. And done without certain perm, anyway. Both of them are non-conforming lots currently in the, in the district. What's going to happen is Mr. Pasquarelli's lot is going to become even more non-conforming, because he's basically going to be ceding the property where Mr. Romeo's stuff is to Mr. Romeo, so his lot's going to still be non-conforming after he gets the land, but that's what this is all about. Okay, so...
And in this case, Ron has determined that, in his opinion, not only is a, is a variance required to decrease the size of a non-conforming lot, but it's also required to increase the size of a non-conforming lot.
Because it's still non-conforming.
I.e. Romeo's lot, if that lot still will be under the standard of five acres. So therefore, it's a dual, it's a dual, dual variance situation.
Because it's non-conforming both before and after, the special, the variance is required.
That's, that's...
Even though I have bad condition, and I'm adding land to it, which is nothing but good.
Yeah, but you're still undersized.
Doesn't make a lot of sense.
Isn't that something that, you know, maybe we should put a little note and say, in the future...
Well, it's a matter of interpretation, it's a matter of interpretation or determination of the zoning law.
No, but I'm saying, in the zoning law, in the future...
See, what would normally, what would normally happen in this case that would, would resolve this sort of issue is that the properties would be so configured that there would be an equal land swap between parties. In this case, you can't, can't do it.
Right. No, it's because of the configuration.
If there were a land swap, then in fact, both parcels would remain exactly as they are in terms of acreage.
And there'd be no increasing non-conformities. But anyway...
In a stricter town, they would have him rip the pool up, too.
Oh, I've been there.
But apparently, a permit with...
And the berm that was done by, and the berm that was put on the property against the stream, and never...
Oh, yeah, that's, this property's been a nightmare from...
From day one.
And, and the, you mentioned, you mentioned the other improvements. And unless, unless the Z B A grants these two lot area variances, the planning board cannot accept the application for subdivision. If the Z B A grants these area variances, the planning board can then accept the application for subdivision, and if the planning board then approves the subdivision, which allows the reconfiguration of the two lots, primarily the expansion of the Romeo parcel, the planning board can then accept Mr. Romeo's applications for special permit and site plan approval for the improvements on what would then be his expanded parcel. Because until that parcel is expanded...
He doesn't own it.
He doesn't own it.
So until, until we get past these first two, three steps, we're not even going to talk about the landscaping and...
No, yeah. And both of these, both of these recommendations are explicit with respect to identifying what that, what that situation is, that...
I, I think they're both good.
Yeah.
I guess we...
Common sense.
Anyway, not to have to, no, I have to read them, okay?
You don't have to read them.
I don't have to read them?
No, there's no requirement.
Did you all read them?
There's no requirement.
Okay, on the Edmund and Arlene Pasquarelli recommendation, could I hear a motion to approve?
移除
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. On the Joseph Romeo recommendation to the Z B A, could I hear a motion to approve?
移除
Could I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty. Now we have to come to Mr. Wallach. And I think that Mark did an extraordinarily good job of explaining what this is all about.
Number, location, and aggregate, aggregate square footage of accessory structures, and the, the one that, the one matter that could resolve through modification in the subdivision, he has resolved.
Yeah.
With the, you know, the 50-foot versus 20-foot setback on the barn.
Is it an attached garage, an accessory structure?
I don't think so, but it has been judged such.
Is that going to be a future?
I have no idea.
Riddle it down the breezeway between them.
I don't know.
No, it's attached.
But could I hear a motion to approve the Wallach recommendation?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Is there any further business?
Very Christmas, everyone.
I have one question.
Yes.
Central Hudson's distribution center north of the village.
Yeah.
Has had major construction.
Again?
Major. Heavy equipment up there, digging holes, I don't know what else they're doing in there. Why hasn't none of that come before?
I do not know. They came before us, what was it, a couple of years ago? They were going to redo the fencing and some of the landscaping there, as I recall?
Yeah.
And I believe that's the last time we saw them.
Everything inside, the fence, looks like they're turning it upside down.
I don't have any ears.
I have no idea.
I just want to know if they should be here.
Yes.
Yes, they should be. Yes. They're not exempt.
Even if they're a public utility?
They're not exempt.
They're not exempt.
They're not exempt.
I've actually represented them before. They shouldn't say it. I've represented, I've represented them in Fishkill as a, for instance.
Now, Woody, could I, could I request you to make a motion?
It'll be it.
Second to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.